Marty, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
Okay, just doing a sound check and I don't see Mr. Short on the list of participants. Is he going to be with us tonight?
I'm here now, Madam Chair.
Oh, there you are.
Right on time, a whole minute.
Right on time, yeah, okay. We've got about a minute and then we'll all, oh, it's four o'clock. Mr. Short, would you please go ahead and start the study session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Sorry, went a little bit late on our, on our other study session we just completed. So I'll go ahead and start with the cases that we have. The first case is CUP 22053. And that's a conditional use permit for a, whoops, I'm sorry, I'm going to the wrong ones here. Hold on one second. The first one is AM 22004. It's complete update to the 2001 Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood area plan text and data. And this one, this is Melissa's case. Go ahead, Melissa.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. I do have a short presentation. This is Melissa Shaw with Community Development and we are, I'm here to introduce the update to the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood area plan. And I think Jessica Simmons was taking a look through the attendees and was going to recognize some of our committee members who have joined us tonight. Jessica, do you have a list?
Yeah, that's right. I'm seeing we have Evelyn Wani and we also have Brian Bates, one of our two co-chairs, and then of course, our own John Ruggles and Jim Clifford.
Thanks, Jessica. So we are presenting this as a minor amendment to the county's comprehensive plan as a complete update to the 2001 Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood area plan. This application's been initiated by Community Development and it encompasses all of Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood, which is about 67 square miles, and you can see the map here. So the area plan boundary has not changed except for a small area in this section here. Can you see the bigger screen?
No, Ms. Shaw, I am just seeing the first slide.
Okay. All right, let me do a new share. Pardon me.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, my apologies. I'll go back to the, to the application details. And then this is showing the map of the area plan, the approximately forty.
Ms. Shaw, this is Chair Aunt Taveris again. It may be on my end, but I'm not seeing anything.
It's not sharing?
No. I'm not. If, if someone else is seeing something I'm not, please chime in.
No, I'm not seeing it either. There you go.
Okay, sorry, yeah, that is, okay, I appreciate the the comment on that. Okay, I'll go back one more slide. So there again is the application summary as a minor amendment to the county's comprehensive plan for a complete update to the 2001 Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood area plan. Community Development Department is the applicant and you can see on the map here, the planning boundary. And it remains the same as the current area plan minus a small area that has just been annexed by the city of Flagstaff. It's down, if you see the cursor down in this corner here, adjacent to the city of Flagstaff. And again, we've recognized four of the committee members who have joined us this evening. They have worked since January of 2020 and have met over thirty times to create a comprehensive update to this plan. So they have created a new vision statement, identified new issues and identified existing issues that needed to be updated. They've created new and reorganized chapters and information and goals and policies that go with those. There are six updated maps, rather there are new updated maps that will go into the plan and they've created an implementation plan. So there are a lot more details that you will be hearing about next month. So again, this is scheduled for the July 27th public hearing. There is something that we wanted to present to you for consideration and that you'll be discussing next month. And that is the major and minor criteria for a, an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And this screen shows you right from the zoning ordinance, the minor amendment criteria. And you can see the bulleted text in purple where revisions or updates to an existing area plan or rural planning area that meets the comprehensive plan's vision, goals and policies are minor amendments to a comprehensive plan. A major amendment is different. So a major amendment would be a change to the text of the comprehensive plan. Changes to the text conflict with or alter one or more of the goals and policies in the plan. So this is something that is, there is one goal and one policy in the current draft that may conflict with the comprehensive plan. And if then that is the case, then, and if this then becomes a major amendment, the scheduling is different and major amendments shall be heard once per calendar year by the Commission at the regular meeting in October. So that is something that the Commission will be looking at next month, but we wanted to show you, give you a preview of that draft goal and policy for your thoughts to think about over this next month. The, the draft in the area plan that is currently written is, as you see it here, and I'll just read it quickly. The goal states that all tax parcels located within the DPTF planning area whose development is subject to approval by the county planning and zoning commission remain within said jurisdiction. And the policy number LU 24 reads, if necessary, the Calcanino County Board of Supervisors should appeal to the Governor of Arizona and the U.S. Secretary of the Interior in opposition to efforts to remove land from said jurisdiction. And looking through the comprehensive plan, there is a goal and a policy that this may conflict with. And you can see those here, the community character goal, promote coordination of land use planning with sovereign tribal nations related to development and resource protection. And then the policy thirteen, the county encourages expanding its collaboration with tribal governments on land use issues, development projects, infrastructure development and cooperative maintenance through strategic planning efforts such as area plans. I will mention that the goal in the draft area plan would impact the property owned by the Horstens Lodge property owned by Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprises, as well as potentially parcel properties that would be possibly annexed. So it kind of has some broader implications than than what might just appear from reading the goal and policy. And so there is some possible alternative language, which we don't really need to discuss now. This will come to you next month, but we will give you some possible alternatives for consideration. And then just with that, here are some questions for either discussion or certainly for consideration next month. One is to ask if there is a conflict between this draft area plan goal and policy and the comprehensive plan goals and policies. And that answer will determine whether or not this is a major or minor amendment. Another option for consideration would be if an alternative policy could address the community's concern with potentially not having input into development proposals for parcels that are either transferred to tribal trust or potentially removed from county jurisdiction in another way. So that's all I had in terms of the update to this area plan. I know there are several more items to get through at the study session, so I'll just stop here and open this for questions for your discussion, if you wish.
Ms. Shaw, this is Chair Aunt Taveris and it would seem to me that our legal counsel would, would be weighing in on this without going into discussion. Has, has legal counsel looked at this and are we going to be getting some direction from them?
Chair Aunt Taveris, yes and yes. They, they are aware of this and they are looking at it and you will receive some further input from them before the public hearing next month.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shaw. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not seeing any other hands raised or unmuted. So Mr. Short, if you would like.
Okay, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me still?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good, sorry, always checking. Oh, if I did neglect to do something at the beginning, like I told the planners I would. We have a new intern. His name is Liam McGovern. And he'll be working with us through the summer, the part of, most of the summer. And so he has already helped out quite a bit. He's working on clarifying, I'm going to say, clarifying some zoning up in Greenhaven. And he's done a really great job on that. So we're real happy to have him.
Mr. McGovern, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. Welcome. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Short.
Okay, the next case, number two on the agenda is DRO 22004. Request for design review for an auto parts store on point three nine acres in the CG zone, CG 10,000 zone out in Donnie Park area. And Zach has this case.
Thanks, Bob. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep, we can see it.
Great, thank you. So this is case DRO 22004. It is the O'Reilly Auto Parts Design Review Overlay case. And so the case is just related to the physical appearance of the store, the colors, materials, site layout and that sort of thing. So here you can see a vicinity map. This is the Timberline Fernwood area. And you can see amongst all of this red commercial zoning, we have the subject property here. You'll probably recognize it better on the aerial photo that I have on the next slide. But directly adjacent to the west is Dollar General, who was approved for design review overlay a few years by the Commission. And I think most of our current Commissioners were here for that case. There's also the Marine Surplus Store adjacent on the east. So here is the aerial photo here. We have the Dollar General here. This is O'Reilly, the subject property for this case and the Marine Surplus Store. They actually all share a parking area that's shared through an easement that includes ingress egress parking. And there's a monument sign here that's also part of an easement to O'Reilly and over Donald, over Dollar General's property. So here's the site plan and you can see that the proposed O'Reilly Auto Parts Store takes up quite a bit of the subject property. There's actually a zero setback line on the interior side property boundaries for in the commercial general zone. And you can also see on this map, even though not completely relevant to the designer view overlay hearing that they all share sort of a septic that also has an easement over here. So in a lot of ways, all of these properties work together sort of as a campus. So the applicant submitted some elevations of the proposed O'Reilly Auto Parts Store. And I think that the scanned version that has not very good resolution here of these elevations also doesn't show the colors perfectly well. But I went to the website of the colors that are proposed and especially for the red, I just wanted to show you that this is their proposing red stucco here textured stucco. And then the rest, for the most part, is corrugated or not corrugated, but it's ribbed metal, steel, and then there's a stone veneer on the front as well. And these are in different earth tone colors. That's just for the front of the store and I have the rear elevation and the side elevations mostly meet this. Where it's relatively monotone, doesn't have much of a human scale to it. It's all an earth tone color, but for the majority, only the front of the store will be seen from the parking lot areas and from the highway. So staff does find generally the colors and materials, the look of the front of the store is consistent with what the designer view overlay is looking for. So here's another photo of that elevation, doesn't have the colors, but you can see where the signage would be. And then for that shared monument sign, Dollar General already has a panel on that sign. And the applicant is showing two different options for what the O'Reilly would have as a panel on that sign. And staff feels that generally this option B is more consistent with earth tone colors and that's what staff is thinking of recommending to the Commission for approval for the colors. And if there's any comments on that, then later on, I'd like to hear that. I did have one issue in reviewing the submittals for this case. And that is that there appears to be less landscaping than is required for a commercial property on the landscaping plan. And the designer view overlay doesn't actually allow the Commission to provide to allow for waivers for that. So staff calculated it out just to generally and not sort of a final calculation. But it appears that approximately five plant units are required. So that's a mixture of trees and shrubs. And shown here is probably approximately one or two units shown. So staff is going to go back to the applicants and ask them to find some additional area to maybe put some landscaping to at least get four, which is staff can do an administrative adjustment for four plant units where five units are required. So that is one issue I'm working out. But in general, if there's any comments or questions, especially related to colors that you've seen on these elevations, I'm happy to take the comments and questions now.
Yeah, Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead. I see your.
Yeah, just, just a comment. This is issue of color is something we have addressed in the past. I think at Silver Saddle, when they were selling storage sheds there. Also going into Flagstaff, literally across from the mall, we had a county island with a gas station. The bright red and yellow was an issue with that. And we have asked for earth tone colors more closely resembling the choice of staff and the color for the sign in the past. So just something to consider.
Commissioner Ruggles, as long as you've spoken up a little bit, I wonder if you have a take on is this color red, in your opinion, acceptable? And then I guess without getting too much into the merit of the case. But is generally, are these colors consistent, do you think, with earth tone colors that the designer view overlay asks for?
I think that I can probably, I'll answer that a little bit in that if you're looking at the bottom proposed sign color, that, that is much closer to what we have found, I believe, to be quite acceptable. It's almost a reddish brown rather than a, a bright red, which is, well, truly a vermilion that members of this Commission have balked that before. So something like that would also blend in well with the existing dollar store and also the, the other business there in that area.
Thank you.
Commissioner Best. Commissioner Best, your hand is raised, but you are muted.
Sorry about that. To answer your question, the question that's on that panel, I would rather see the stucco be a little browner, more like the sign. And I wonder, I know we worked really hard on on the Dollar General there. Is this consistent with what we required of them? I can't remember all the details. I don't have a mental image of it, but I know we went through credit process.
Commissioner Best, my understanding is that it's similar design. It's the same developer. Generally, it's similar, but I think Principal Planner Bob Short handled that case and maybe he, maybe he can enlighten us a bit.
Yeah, so each of these, each of these is their own case. So it, it definitely blends with it. It has more of the Hannah Sazi rock and they did quite a covering of Hannah Sazi rock. And this is the same developer. He didn't do quite as much, maybe, and speculated it might be more, quite a bit more expensive to do that. But he does have this, this stone veneer in the front that looks similar and kind of some of these colors will, will blend well. This will be right up against it. I mean, there's no setback at all. So it'll be right next to that store.
Yeah, it's, it's probably a little less visible from the highway, but my only comment would be to answer that question, more earthy red? Yeah, more earthy red.
Okay, fair enough. And then for my analysis, I can take a picture of the Dollar General and include that in the packet to compare if the Commission's interested. Certainly, this case would be on its own merit, but just to understand the look of the era, the area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shorts. I'm not seeing other, any other hands raised. So, Mr. Short, would you please move to item number three?
Thank you, Ma- Madam Chair. This item three is case number 22044. It's conditional use permit for a hundred and fifty foot wireless telecommunications facility on sixty acres. And this is located out on Deer Farm Road, just west of Pittman Valley. And this is Kelly's case.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Commissioners and Madam Chair. This is CUP 2244, as Bob mentioned. Just trying, there we go, okay. So here we have an aerial and a site photo for your reference. This is right along the border of the Williams City Boundary. You can see that in the really light, white perforated line here. And the site of the tower is going to be kind of up here, right along Deer Farm Road. At the bottom, you can see that the parcel does encompass I-40, which is where this photo was taken. I included a photo simulation so that you could see kind of what it would look like from the I-40. It is a hundred and fifty feet tall, but it is a mono pine. So as you can see, it blends in a little bit better. And this case is for a multi-tenant cell tower. And it's designed for co-location for up to four tenants, including T-Mobile, potentially including Burison and other mutual carriers. The radio equipment building is going to be painted dark brown and the tower itself, as you've already seen, is going to be a mono pine. It is a hundred and fifty feet in height and that's designed so that it'll fill the service gap along the I-40 corridor. And it has to be able to reach above the pine needles. So as I'm considering this case, we're going to look at the preferred criteria for wireless telecommunication facilities. And we're also going to be looking at the propagation maps. Are there any questions or comments from the Commission?
This is Chair Aunt Taveris. I, I've got a comment. I can tell you that this is going to be well appreciated because it's I'm, I'm in that area quite a bit and there is a definite dead spot. So I'm, I'm personally pretty excited about this. That's just my comment, but I have no questions. And I don't see any other hands raised. So I'm going to, ah, nope, Vice Chair Walters.
Thank you. This is Vice Chair Walters. I was wondering, is that Forest Service land that this is going to be placed on or is that private property?
This is going to be on private property. It is a private parcel.
And so what is the, the current zoning on that property? Is that some, we're going to have to worry about the fall zone around this thing and make sure we build that into the permit or what?
This is a choose one property and it is something that we're going to have to look at. I believe the applicant has provided information on that. They have a certification from an engineer, which I will also be analyzing and including in the staff report for this project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I'm not seeing other, any other hands raised. So, Mr. Short, let's move to item number four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number four is CUP 22049, a request for a conditional use permit for a campground on a ten point eight acre site. This site is located off of the sixty four, just north of Red Lake or right in, or actually in the Red Lake area, just north of where the actual Red Lake is. And this is Zach Schwartz's case.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is Zach Schwartz and I wanted to show you the vicinity map for the subject property. Also, I wanted to let you know that the applicant and the applicant's representative are in the audience. So if you have any questions or comments for them, when that becomes time, they'll be available for you. But so this is the Red Lake area and this is the subject property. We have Highway sixty four. You can sort of see it and I apologize for this map isn't very easy to, to read. But we have Highway sixty four here and then we have Grand Canyon Railway right of way. The railway sort of bisects this parcel. So together, it's ten acres, split in just about half by this property or by the railway. And then also directly adjacent to Highway sixty four. We have in the blue, this is state trust land, which the county has on the official zoning map, set it for Zone G for when the property is eventually sold to private entities. So here you can see the aerial photos and you can see that it's pretty well treed. Here's the Grand Canyon right of, right of way through the property. There's an existing is onto the subject property and the applicant has provided me with an easement and I think an encroachment permit that allows them to use this access. I'm not sure that it's approved for a use other than single family residential. But at the very least, conditioned, the applicant will need to go through the transportation statement, traffic statement or traffic impact analysis process to look at what might be required if, if any improvements are required with A.D.O. Wanted to show you the site plan. So it's pretty small here, but these pictures right here, these items right here are dome tents. There are also what we call cabins, basically permanent structures that are habitable within. One of them is within an amenities building here and one of them is within an A-frame that I believe is historic and existing on the property. And then there are also seven spots that my current understanding is that it would be possibly interchangeable between RV spaces or platforms adjacent to these spaces could be used for pitching tents. As far as operation, the applicant's current narrative says operation between March and November, which is actually above the requirements. which is actually above the requirements that both the building division and the planning and zoning division allow for temporary structures. So they'll need to reduce that in their narrative to six months or less, or it would basically be conditioned on this permit. And tents need to be removed in the off-season. The applicant's narrative also states that onsite managers would be located on the property from nine AM to six PM during the operation season. There are currently no utilities, but the applicants may in the future use solar for power. And there are some communal restrooms. I'm not sure if I showed them. They're actually right here and right here. But I think I'd like to, before we get to the staff report, have the applicant show where the wastewater for these would be and make sure, I would make sure that they that the plan is feasible in talking with our environmental quality division. The applicant's narrative also includes that they would have some amenities there, including platforms for stargazing, yoga, they would have a pool, which is shown on the site plan. And then that larger amenity building that would also include livable space. They have stated in their narrative that they would have supplies, goods and souvenir sales. All staff before this study session just had sort of our own preview to this study session together and staff's conclusion was that doing the retail in this building would not be something that would be would be permissible. So staff would either recommend a condition or preferably have the applicant change the narrative to not include any retail sales in that building. You may have noticed that the typical requirement for campgrounds is that in the general zone, you get two units per acre and you have to have a minute, at least ten acres. This property is ten acres and it shows twenty-eight units. So the applicant would be requesting a waiver for that. That is something that technically the commission is able to provide a waiver for. In looking at the site plan with it split in half and concentrated all near the roadway and adjacent properties, at this point, staff is unsure that they would be, that we would be able to recommend approval for going above and beyond basically a hundred and fifty percent of the typical density allowance for that. And without giving too much of what the commission feels about merit for the case, I'd like to generally hear about what the commission feels about waivers in the general zone for density. After I finish giving this brief presentation. But the also, the applicant's also looking for a waiver of the distance between cabins, and actually, this is inaccurate, it's just for distance. So you might remember in twenty nineteen, when we added campgrounds to the general zone, a new use. It, the idea was that it's typically a single-family residential zone and that thing should be temporary and moving off the property or only seasonal. And that if the use reverted back to residential, that any permanent structure should be able to meet the minimum standards that are typically held for single-family residential in the general zone. So with that being said, the single-family present, in the single-family residential zones, you're typically allowed one main residence and one accessory dwelling unit. And there are size limitations to that, but the applicant's plans don't conflict with the size requirements. The applicant's plans do conflict slightly with the distance requirements. So in order to have the structures clearly incidental to each other and consistent with single-family residential zoning, they're supposed to be with ten acres, a minimum of or a maximum of two hundred feet between each other. The applicant's showing two hundred and sixty-three feet. So either the applicant would need to show that as reduced or the, actually, the Director of Community Development has a few criteria for waivers from that, which the applicant could meet. So staff could staff could condition that they get that waiver from the director, even though I'm not sure that those condition, that the criteria for that waiver are met at this point. But certainly, I'll include analysis in that in the staff report for this case. And then the last waiver that is requested by the applicant for this case is that for campgrounds in the general zone, there's a minimum setback requirement when adjacent to neighboring resident, single-family residential parcels is that they have a fifty-foot setback. The site plan is showing a thirty-foot setback for this structure on the south side where adjacent to state trust land, which again could eventually be sold to and become general zone. So I also wanted to go through briefly with the commission that there are criteria for waivers from for conditional use permits that would have to be made in order to approve those waivers. And staff is unsure that we could support the waivers, especially based on that the third criteria is that the granting of the waiver is the minimum needed to accomplish the purpose for which the waiver is requested. And it can't constitute the granting of a special privilege. And I'm just not sure how we could get there and meet this requirement. The applicant's narrative didn't include much justifying the waiver. So I also wanted to just go through with you and I'll try to be as brief as possible. We have a number of standard conditions that have been put on the conditional use permits for campgrounds in the general zone. They're shown here. I've already discussed about the the general density, but also making sure that RVs are twenty percent or less of the total density of campsites there. So that would be something to look at. One of the conditions that is standard that's been placed on these is that they're staffed twenty-four-seven and with people that have fire training. And so that's not something that the applicant has proposed. The applicant has proposed no fence along the property. And that's been a standard condition to have fencing and to make it wildlife-friendly so that people aren't wandering off properties, but that wildlife can still get through, especially if there's corridors. But also these conditions that I'm sure the commission is familiar with at this point. So I think I had a couple questions about what the commission felt on some of the application. And I'm happy to get some comments on that, or if there's any questions, I'd like to help answer them for you.
Vice Chair Walters, Vice Chair, before you go ahead, before you proceed, I would like to ask Ms. Gabbard if she would please turn her camera off. Okay, go ahead, Vice Chair Walters.
This is Vice Chair Don Walters. I am seeing a lot of problems with this application. I think they need to do a bunch of work on this. And and it, in my opinion, I don't think it's ready for us to to look at with all the waivers and all the 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 conditions that we put on other people and they're they're not addressing them. I think you need to go back to them and and have them rework this application before you bring it back to us.
Thank you. I'm happy to do that, Vice Chair Walters. And I also, I think that the applicant and the applicant's representative are on the line with us. So if you wanted to direct any questions or just have any general direction for them, that might be helpful. Or if you have any, yeah, if you have any questions for them, but certainly I'll note that with the amount of waivers that are requested, we might want to come closer to the typical standards.
Well, that the fencing, the full-time supervision, there's a lot of reasons that we put these conditions on there and and I, for one, am not willing to to grant a bunch of waivers on things that that we found would be detrimental to a facility like this. I think they need to rework this and 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 not be expecting a bunch of waiver approvals.
Thanks for your comments.
Okay, Commissioner Best.
Thank you. It's kind of odd to have the other piece of land on the other side. Putting all of the ten-acre development on the part of the property, could that other side be sold later and split off? I mean, is that there in perpetuity as open space? How does that work?
Commissioner Best, so the parcel must have been created prior to the railroad coming through and then through eminent domain or some other way, the Grand Canyon Railroad then took the property that bisects. The general zone is a minimum ten acres zone. And so that couldn't be sold off and split unless there were some variance approved by the Board of Adjustment or some zone change approved by the Board of Supervisors. So I, and I don't see either of those things as being particularly feasible. And then if it were split off, where would the legal access come from? That would be another criteria for having the property split would be to have a minimum legal access to the property. So I don't think that that's something that could happen.
Okay, thank you. We have a list of fifteen things that we like to apply to campgrounds. Not all of the elements are on the list. There's someone about legal trace and contacting adjacent public land supervisors to get their input and giving people maps to show where they can and can't go, like they can't wander into the state land legally. So there, I think there's a lot to be done here. I remember some time ago applications for for development, commercial development near valley were denied because the area plan there says things should be should be grouped at valley. Is there something that applies to Red Lake in the same way? In other words, is this too far down the highway from the development?
Commissioner Best, so in the valley area plan, there's certainly the requirement, I think it's within a quarter mile of the intersection of Highway one eighty and Highway sixty-four, that that is the limit of where commercial zoning should be located. And it might even be worded a little bit more broadly than that. There's not that exact language within the relic area plan. I think there's something about frontage. The amount of frontage that it needs to have. And I believe so Principal Planner Bob Short typically runs the pre-application meetings. And I think that that was something that the area plan goals and policies might have been listed to the applicant then. But certainly in my analysis of this case, I'll make sure that there's consistency with the area plan or an analysis of consistency. And before we get there, I'll go ahead and take a look about any applicable goals and policies about commercial development that are similar and provide that to the applicant to make sure we don't go too far along this road. If there is inconsistency with the area plan, one thing I will note for the commission is that I believe that this maybe not exactly to the amount of units that you see on the site plan. But I do believe this is in operation and is a code compliance case as well. So that's another thing to note. I forgot to note that.
So this is, this this exists now?
I believe that they have ceased operation because there is a code compliance case against it. But I guess what I was getting at with the location question is that the location was already used, so the applicant didn't look around for a place that was consistent with the area plan. But I certainly will make sure that there's an analysis of consistency with the area plan.
This gets more and more interesting. I, in general, I agree with Vice Chair Walters. There's a we seem to be scrambling a bit here. Interestingly, I would support retail sales that was basically limited to what folks would want in a campground, you know. It would be a shame to not be able to buy a you know, some cokes and a and a port of milk and have to go out on the highway to get that. So I would support a wa- waiver for reasonable retail sales in support of a campground. Other than that, I think there's a lot of work to do.
Right. Well, and I want to just speak to the retail sales part of it. So there's nothing explicit that allows any sort of sales in the campground section. But I think that there are diff- staff can interpret different, I guess we're trying to avoid having a convenience store here that people stop off of sixty-four-four, while also allowing allowing what generally you would think of maybe like a vending machine or something like that. And I think staff is going to go back and I'll go, I'll get with the other staff to see what a reasonable interpretation of that could be. And I can include that in the analysis.
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Yes, I'd like to chime in on what Commissioner Walters or Vice Chair Walters has said. I have the same problems with this that Vice Chair Walter stated, I also have a problem with the fact that we would have retail sales there. That is a commercial use. So I think that there are too many waivers being asked for, and I think this needs to be revisited and looked at in terms of the the density that is being asked for, for one, and the overall plan. And like I said, too many waivers being asked for. The other thing is, one of the first things I looked at when I pulled this up, I looked at the western portion of that and access as Mr. Schwartz has stated is a real problem for that. And access across the right-of-way is another problem. And fencing, something to dissuade people from getting onto the right-of-way is I I think absolutely mandatory with something like this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Mr. Schwartz, this is Chair Antiviris. If this campground is currently in operation, do they have a septic, an approved septic system through our environmental department? How are they? What what's going on on this property in regards to that?
Chair Antiviris, to be honest with you, I'm not completely sure. I can, we have a great code enforcement officer who's, I think, taken a lot of notes on this case. And I believe he's ordered them to stop operation and have this application in before resuming that. As far as his ability to ensure that, I'm not exactly sure. I think he's pretty good and I think he's been checking up on them. I I can't tell you what the wastewater situation is, but it's certainly a health and safety issue that our department takes seriously and I'll look into it tomorrow morning with the code enforcement officer.
Okay, thank you. I do, I believe you indicated that the applicant was with us this evening. If, is is that correct? Can you identify that person?
I'm sure I see Zach Clockwork. I think he's either an architect or engineer who represents the applicant and Joe Lisa is the property owner and applicant.
Okay, I'm going to ask one of them or both to please address my question on on the septic issue. What what is currently going on?
So the current setup was, I'm Joe, by the way. The current setup, we were advised to cease operation and all that. We abided and did so at this point. And the set, the septic setup is not, it has been completely like eliminated. And we had recently gotten the percolate test dug and an inspection done on that and are basically in just the waiting phases to get an approval to actually have a it's a non-traditional alternative septic system installed. Once the permit process would would then move forward. Once the permit process would then move forward and be approved. But we're basically with the past violation and the unknowing of certain things with the process at the beginning. We ended all the operations and basically have been working with Mark from the code enforcement on just making sure that we're abiding and doing the things that we need to, to make everything compliant, but haven't, we can't get the actual permit for septic or anything like that moved forward until that, until everything else has moved forward. So we kind of are just in a process of getting all of this, this stuff done and making sure that we are operating or making sure that we're compliant before operating again. And so before we would operate or anything like that again, we would have the septic in place.
Okay, I'm going to drill down on this a little. If you were operating, you didn't have an approved septic system. What, how were you addressing that?
It was a tank system. It was a vaulted tank. And it was being pumped weekly by Cyclone Septic. So we never had any issue with anything. But we then were advised that that was not something that we were able to do. And we obviously at that point then stopped using that tank.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, that.
I would add to that, that there is a pending application for that alternate system that has been submitted to the county. And it has been designed. It does meet the current requirements and it can be approved. And that was one of the conditions on us applying for the CUP. They said, we want to see that that application has been made and is pending. So there is an alternate system that's designed for this site. Plans were completed for that. It has been submitted to the county and it is pending per approval by the county.
Okay, thank you for that information. Mr. Schwartz, there is an individual by the name of Brian Bates that has his hand raised. Is Mr. Bates associated with this case?
Madam Chair, he is not. He is actually a member of the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan, and he will be, I think, soon appointed to the Board of Adjustment. But he's not strictly related to this case in any way.
Okay, and the reason that I asked that, it's my understanding that at study sessions, the the conversation is staff, commissioners, applicant. Would it be out of, like, I'm not sure exactly how he plays into this, but I'm kind of feeling it would be out of order to call on him at this time. Would you please give me your thoughts?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, and if the County Attorney's Office has any additional comments on that, I would welcome that. But I think the purpose of the study session is just for staff to give the commission a heads up on what's coming to them next month to get any general comments and questions understood and to, I don't think it's generally something that we would invite the general public to speak on. But I would welcome any additional comments on that from legal.
Mr. Lumpkin here with the County Attorney's Office. Zach is directed, even though this is a yeah, so this, because of the number of members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that are present, this is a public meeting. Members of the public are permitted to be present, to listen. They can request to participate, but just as in the Planning and Zoning Commission General Sessions, and just at your discretion, Madam Chair, to whether or not to allow people to speak, the same thing would apply here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. In order to keep things in the order that this study, that this commission has conducted study sessions, I'm not going to call on Mr. Bates to address the commission this evening. Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised. Do you have anything additional?
I would just like to emphasize that the condition that we have asked other campgrounds to comply with of having someone on site twenty-four seven. That's a very important condition. That's a basic health and safety. Have a hard time getting past that one.
If I may just speak as well on that, I'm not sure if that was directly added into our thing. Are listed on there, but our site will be staffed twenty-four seven. Our operation hours are only from nine to six, but our site will be staffed twenty-four seven, and I can clarify that as well in our narrative.
That's great. Thank you very much. And just make sure that person has some sort of training from the fire department. I'm sure you'll work it all. Thank you.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, and Zach slash Clockwork, your hand is raised. Please go ahead because you are with the applicant.
Yeah, so I want to thank all the commissioners for their review of this and just wanted to clarify a couple of the questions I think that have been raised and some of the issues that have been raised to make sure that as we continue to make revisions and adjustments that you know, we're all working together towards the same end goal of getting this compliant and allowing this owner to eventually resume operations. So I wanted to address the waivers requested first. So a couple of the things, and some of our reasons for asking for some of the waiver pieces in this, I just wanted to address those. So on the twenty maximum units per parcel, that's why we are showing nineteen rentable units on this. Unfortunately, due to the way the county classifies some of these structures, they are counting, structures that we are not using as rentable units are counting towards our total unit count. So for instance, two of these waivers are driven out of our desire to build this base camp and check-in building. In that, in that check-in building, we would like to create a caretaker's residence to allow for site to be on staff twenty-four seven. Currently, that is not the case. And so in order to allow for staff to be there, we need place, a place for staff to live. And that caretaker's residence is counting towards that total unit count. As Mr. Schwartz mentioned, there is an existing A-frame structure that is on the property and it's shown in its current location. And it is more than the two hundred feet from where we think the best location for a main building and check-in building is. And so we have a choice of either demolishing that historic structure that's there and just having the new check-in building or getting a waiver that we can put the check-in building where it logically makes sense on the site for us to operate out of and get the waiver for the distance piece. So that's where that request was generated from. On the unit counts, what we had proposed as primitive campsites, so these are not, when we say RVs and the reason the RV discussion has come into this is some of the changing trends in RV and travel right now with the conversion vans, the sprinter vans, camper van type functions. We have no intention of having RVs on the site. We do not have RV sites. They don't have hookups. They don't have pads. These are, these are a parking space and a deck platform for primitive camping only. And staff had raised the issue of, well, what if someone has one of these camper vans? They said, well, we would rent them one of these spaces. But we're not, we have no intention of having, you know, forty-five foot motor coaches on the site. These were primitive camping spaces. Unfortunately, those are, are per the, the language in the ordinances. If a camper van could park on it, then it's treated as an RV. And if it's treated as an RV, then it counts towards your unit count. And so we felt like some of these things that we were wanting to do with the site were really not in the intention of the ordinance that was there. That we have nineteen rentable units, one less than the twenty that would be permissible without a variance. And the intention with that was that if we have to count that caretaker's residence, because it will be a residence, because we'll have staff there twenty-four seven, that, that, those two things would get us under the twenty maximum. So really, the request for the variance was how would you, or how do you feel about a primitive campsite that has no hookups, no utilities, no anything like that? And should that, in the spirit of, because I believe, and again, this is coming from our discussions with staff, the limit of the two units per acre is intended for cabins and homes and more permanent structures. That's where that requirement comes from. And we felt like with the very small size and scale of the units that we're proposing, the amount of open space that's being maintained on the property and the minimal impact from a development perspective that these things represent, we felt like it may still be appropriate. And it was worth, you know, raising the question to the commission to see what your thoughts were, what your opinions were. You know, we want to, we want to work with you. We want to get to a point where this is approvable. So some of these things, you know, we raised the issue and said, let's present it. Let's see how they feel about this. And we're happy to make amendments or changes and get it into compliance. The last waiver, I think, that was requested was on the property boundary. And that is dealing with one particular unit that's on the south side of the property. Again, this is an existing unit. It's shown in the location where it is. When we reviewed this originally, we thought we would be okay because border, property borders to state land have no setback requirement. And then staff advised that, you know, the way that these are typically treated is it's not what it's currently, but what it could become. And so that fifty-foot boundary easement on the south side of the property is kind of being agreed to preemptively. Because as it's currently zoned as state land, there would be no setback. And so when we drew that fifty-foot line, we found that one of these existing sites is outside of that. And so the request for that waiver was to allow that site that's existing to remain. But that's certainly one that we are willing to give up. And if that unit needs to be demolished or relocated, that can be done. But that, I just wanted to clarify a couple of those things. Also, on the, some of the requirement side, I believe some things that are being presented as though we are out of compliance, we are actually in compliance with. I do believe the entire property is fenced currently. There's a gate access at that existing drive. And there are fenced boundaries, I believe, between both adjoining properties as well as the state highway. So I do believe most of that entire parcel is already fenced. Zach, can you pull up that slide that showed some of those other other items on the campground side?
Sure. But I definitely wanted to go through the narrative because I don't think that what I've stated to the commission is incorrect. But what would you like to go through? What was it? The waivers?
No, we've been through the waivers. I think the study standards and impact. So we have been in contact with ADOT. And they, they would like to see a traffic impact statement. One of the issues that we've had is that we share that drive access with three other parcels to our north. The parcel immediately to our north is also a glamping site that has a conditional use permit that was approved by this planning and zoning committee about six months ago. And there, they have no direct access to the highway. They access their property through an easement on our property. And so ADOT indicated that any traffic statement would need to include the traffic generated by both sites for them to evaluate it. We have reached out to that property owner and they've been unwilling to collaborate on a traffic impact statement or study regarding that. So we are moving forward to do that on our own. But we're not sure how ADOT is going to evaluate that because the direction we've been given is that both sites need to be included in that. Nor was that a requirement that was placed on the applicant to the north prior to their approval from this body for their conditional use permit. The Firewise Plan, we did submit that we have a contract with the local fire cooperative or fire jurisdiction. And we will be paying to be a part of that fire service. Additionally, we would have our staff submit to whatever fire training is offered to be a part of that. So those are, those are all things that we are happy to agree to. And I think most of these other things were fairly straightforward. And again, we're happy to comply with those requests.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Vice Chair Walters?
This is Vice Chair Walters. I'd just like to state that your your assumptions are based on a ten acre site, and that's what our restrictions and guidelines are for. But the slightly utilization here is far less than ten acres. So you're asking for a lot of waivers based on utilizing a ten acre site, which you're not. You're much smaller than that. So I suggest you work with staff and and try to come up with a more palatable plan for us to look at. Thank you.
We can do that.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, with that, I'm not seeing any other, Zach from Clockwork. I see your hands still raised. I think you have given a pretty good presentation. We do have other things that we've got to work through in this study session. We do have a time limit. So I'm going to go ahead and move this meeting forward and see no other hands raised or unmutes. Mr. Short, would you please proceed to item number five?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'll move on. It is quite interesting. I have to say that the next case is right next door to this case. So I'll go ahead and share my screen and discuss that. This is, this this is CUP twenty-two sixty-six. And this is Cole North, who was the applicant for the previous case. This is actually a modification to that case that the applicant for next door just talked about. It's about seven and a half miles north of Williams. It's a parcel of ten point six acres. And it's conditional use permit for twelve-site campground. This is the vicinity map, which shows that it also, as you can see, it also is cut by the railroad track.
Mr. Short, this is Chair Antiveras. I am not seeing any map.
Oh, you aren't? Okay.
I'm not.
I understand why, because I need to share my screen.
Okay, thank you.
One second. Let me get that together. Not the first time I've done that. Okay, can you see it now? Madam Chair, can you see the screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
This looks like a different case.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Short. I Yeah, I I'm sorry about that, Mr. Short. I I also have some muting deficiencies. Yeah, you have the CO bar solar case, solar array.
Yeah, that one's not ready yet. All right. All right, here we go. This is where I was. This is the vicinity map. The Red Lake store right here, CG two thousand zones right there. That that's the actual Red Lake Perrin Ranches here. And Zach kind of showed you this same thing, the same vicinity right here. And this is an arrow photo. Of the subject property. And as you can see, I believe there are about six acres on each side of the tracks in this case. And this side is just not really usable. As Zach was saying, there's really not access to it at all. So it's really not a usable site at all. Now, what happened? This was the case, CP twenty-one twenty. Last year, a little bit earlier than this. And this is approved by the commission. As you can see, the access came out, comes off the same place. And this is a twelve-acre site. And what happened was, once the applicant and his engineer started looking at the site. They determined that this wasn't going to work very well. So they came back to us with another site plan and said, is this substantially different? And we had to say, actually, the director indicated that it was substantially different. We could not. Say that it wasn't. And as you can see, it's quite a bit different. The access is, the driveway is on the other side of the site. The, these are really important. These are the yurts that have actually been approved already and they are approved as single-family dwellings. They're hard-sided yurts, so the building building division has determined they can approve these. These would serve as the two units that are permitted by right on a site, the primary residence and the accessory dwelling. So anyway, it's it's still twelve units. What the applicant did in this case is he said, only have six acres on this side. So I'm going to make it consistent with that density of. Two units per acre and he has twelve units that he is proposing. And I did, uh, well, first of all, any questions on this particular case?
Yeah, um, it sure would be nice to resolve. The entrance. The previous applicant said that this current applicant did not want to cooperate, but. Perhaps we could make that a condition of approval of both of these.
Commissioner Best. I and I've looked at this and I I we've, uh, the applicant has provided me with. An easement. I don't, I, my understanding is that there is an easement. You know, I don't, I don't doubt that. We we can send it to the county, uh, the county surveyor. And make sure it is consistent, but I didn't see anything about uses on the easement. So if, when you come off of this highway, you get onto a roadway. An easement that goes this way, goes up to the north and accesses several properties up in there. So I really don't see an issue with this easement. I I'm not sure what the issue is, to be honest with you. I can also say I actually just pulled up the the. Staff report. This is actually the staff report I'm working on for this case. Which is very similar to the staff report for the last case, as you might imagine. And you can see right here that there is. A condition that this, that the 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 traffic study, they did, they did submit a traffic study in the beginning. But or a traffic report submitted by the applicant shall be approved by the Arizona Department of Transportation, the county engineer. And the Community Development Engineering Division as applicable. If additional traffic studies are required, all improvements identified by these studies shall be installed by the applicant. So that was a condition that the applicant had from the previous case and also wanted to show you if I could. This is in the same area. That we did address Red Lake area plan policies as part of that application and it appeared to be consistent with those.
Okay, well, I would just say that, you know, what happens? If the next property also turns into a campground. We're getting a lot of traffic, a lot of. You know, a lot of left turns off of. A very busy highway, so if there's any way that we can. Find a way to make. Sense of this, that would be great. Thanks.
Yes, I think in one, Mr. Best, in one way or another, we definitely need to have a. And we have to meet ADOT's requirements in terms of an encroachment permit for new developments. That, um, might be more than anticipated off of this this particular access. Any other questions from the commission on this case?
Mr. Short, this is Sharon Taveras. I would just concur with Commissioner Best's comments. It's it's the cumulative effect. Of the traffic that I think needs to be reviewed and with these both coming to us next week, next month. At the same time, uh, adjacent uses. I I think that there is some merit to what Commissioner Best is is saying, and I think you agree with that, so. It it's going to come up at the at the hearing, I know, because that's something this commission is concerned about is safety. Highway sixty-four is a busy roadway, especially during the peak season. So we just want to be sure that we get ahead of that and that's my only comment. I'm not seeing. Any other hands raised or unmuted, so, um, please continue.
Okay, that's pretty much it. And they have the same tents that they were looking at before. And this is some pictures of the property. And that is it. Shall we move on to the next case?
Uh, I think, yes, I think that we could, Mr. Short, because I'm not seeing any any hands raised.
Okay, Madam Chair, the next for our administrative renewals, would the commission like to hear about those?
I don't have any questions and I'm not seeing a show of hands, so. Why don't you go ahead and hit the Community Development Department update?
Okay, that was good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have one comment on. If I may, this is Commissioner Best.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. CUP twenty-two oh five nine. I don't know what relationship they have with the forest there. If there are trails into the forest, but I I would like to. Ask staff to review the fifteen items. That we. Use for campgrounds, that you have some camping there. And, um, if appropriate. Talk with the applicant about how they might meet those conditions. And whether or not we need to do, uh, anything more formal than that. Hopefully, uh, you know, I I haven't been out there in years. I don't know. What their relationship to the forest is, but certainly they're on the edge of it and they probably walk in it, so there should be some orientation to people about fire and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Yes, we can do that. We can do that. I believe they they did have some. Allowance for camping out in a meadow. It's a little bit, it's kind of out away from the trees.
I do remember that now. And you know that that, uh. That letter that you had run, one of our applicants write. And I forget which one. I think it was one of the ones that we missed tonight. Yeah, there was a. No, it wasn't a continuance. There was one, you know, we're going to have a special session. But you just had the applicant write a a letter stating that they would. Comply with those. The relevant ones of the fifteen, list of fifteen. And, um, and I assume all the commissions know what I'm talking about. Is that true? Speak up if you don't.
Yeah, this this is chair onto there, as I do know.
Okay, we we made a list of fifteen things that we've applied to campgrounds over the last two or three years. As our knowledge unfolded. And, um. On one of the. Administrative renewals. Staff apparently just had. Them and write a letter and listed the things and said, yes, we will do these things because they're reasonable and. Help everyone involved. So I thought that was a good way to avoid having to go through a whole CUP process. Thank you.
Mr. Best, yes, that's certainly, that's a good idea. I I'll I'll do that with this particular. CUP, because they are definitely allowed to camp on on part on part of this property. Okay. I'll move on to department updates. We still, uh, there just aren't very many candidates out there right now. For the the positions like, uh, you know, Assistant Director Planning Manager. We did put out advertisements again. We didn't get anyone that was qualified. At all for that that position, so we continue to move forward with with what we have. No, there's Jay, okay.
Yeah, hi, Commissioners. Good evening. It's Jay here. Um, yes, Bob summed it up is. With regards to the Assistant Director position, we have not received. A single qualified applicant that meets even the minimum qualifications in six weeks. We're also recruiting for an environmental engineering supervisor. David Monahan is retiring at the end of July. Shelley McCarthy, she's taken a full-time position in public work. She is currently our admin specialist one. We're recruiting for a hydrologist. Uh, we had a number of people leave all of a sudden and they're all moving away. We did, uh, also just lose our lead inspector. He and his wife are moving. Uh, so we are going to be having a number of positions open in the board during the budget process, um, approved. A building inspector term limited as well as a term limited plans examiner to help us keep up with our. workload, just because we're continuing to see unprecedented permit activity will likely. Break our previous record for new home permits in one month this month. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, Jay, this is Commissioner Best. This may sound funny, but I'm serious. Is is there anything we could convert to housing? Is there something out out at? At Rogers Lake? Housing is the issue.
It certainly is. Commissioner Best, you're right.
Possibility of. Of anything.
Not that I'm aware of.
If we offer housing, we'd have. Lists of people.
Yeah, there there have been discussions with regards to. The possibility, and this is. I have no idea the likely feasibility of this. I just know it's been tossed out there. About the county possibly purchasing one of the old hotels on sixty-six and converting it to. Employee housing, it likes inter-room employee housing, so folks can get, at least get here and then try to figure out how to get into a home, but. That is such a preliminary and esoteric concept. I honestly don't even. Know if it's feasible. The county doesn't have a lot of extra money.
Okay, well, just a question. Because it's been a long time.
Yes, yes, it has.
You know, it's not going to get any better, so.
No. No, there's a, there's something like seventeen or eighteen percent vacancies at the county right now. And affordability, based on what the county can pay, is clearly the issue that that people turn us down.
Maybe I'll come out of retirement, Jay.
There you go. Be fun. Thanks, Bob.
All right, thanks, Jay. Um. I'm going to, I'll go ahead and move on to the next one and Jay might comment on this one, but it says county management has not made a decision. To resume live hearings yet. Do you have any updates on that, Jay?
I don't, Bob, nothing, nothing more than than you and I shared with the Windmill Ranch folks.
Okay, yep, so we may, I think there were some discussions, but there hasn't been a decision yet. Okay, uh, the next one is on the Donnie Park area plan. I think Melissa has covered that adequately. They had a couple of meetings. And they did finalize the policies to move forward. The next one is on the Brownfields grant. Do you have any comments on the Brownfields grant, Melissa?
The only update on that is that we are trying to, um, work with some specific property owners to. Have their sites nominated for some of the grant funding, so I. Think last time I mentioned that the grant will be extended for a year through September of twenty twenty-three, so we are still. Making sure that that information is out there. And that the grant money is available for property owners, commercial industrial property owners that may have. Potential. Issues on their sites that need environmental assessments. There's no enforcement arm to this. This is simply information.
Thank you, Melissa. And the next one is on the regional plan. I know you've been working, she's been done. Melissa's done a lot of the regional plan, I'm going to say, working closely with city staff on that. Any updates on that?
Just one, um, comment for the commission and you all have received. Um, an email from us to complete your brainstorming. On the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis, and if you, just as a reminder, if you could go in and complete that by July sixth. So if you had any additional thoughts to add. Once you've finished with that, we'll close that part of it and then send the ranking portion for you to look at. If you have any questions, just contact me and we can guide you back to the site.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. And then to go on to Board of Supervisors update. The Windmill Ranch case has moved forward. They they did ask for a little bit of a delay because they did want that live hearing, actually. So they are currently scheduled for September the thirteenth. They wanted to put it up as long as possible to get that live, live hearing and the board was coming back. Actually, a day before the other hearing would have been set, so the board had requested that they moved that up a little bit. Otherwise, we don't have anything on the schedule for the board. Jay, any comments on that?
I'm sorry, what was the date again?
I believe it's September thirteenth. Should be the second Tuesday in September and I'm pretty sure it's the thirteenth, yep. Okay, I don't guess there any more comments on that. Uh, next is Commission and Staff Roundtable. We have about four minutes till the hearings. So were there any things we want to talk about?
Yeah, Mr. Short, do you know if we are going to be having a special session for the two? Items on the agenda that we won't be able to hear tonight?
Thanks for reminding me of that, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, we do have that scheduled at this point. Uh, we do have a quorum, uh, so far. I just encourage Commissioner Best to make sure and do his best to be able to make it. I think he's going to be traveling at that time.
What date is it?
And that would be, I'm sorry, that would be July twelfth.
Okay, got it. At twelve thirty, excuse me.
Five thirty, right. You'll be getting that, uh, that packet soon.
Okay, got it. Okay, I'm not. Yeah, okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised or unmutes.
Madam Chair, my hand is raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't see it raised.
I just unraised it.
Okay, go ahead. Okay. There it is.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, so as many of us did, I had some emotional days, uh, watching. Smoke bill off the top of Fremont as Weatherford Canyon and Doyle disappeared and, uh. I just didn't know where to put it, so I called Melissa and, uh, it was probably kind of an emotional call. Sorry about that. I don't know. I was, I was looking. For information. And I was looking for anything, uh, that we can do better to protect our forests. Uh, we certainly made a lot of progress, I think, in how we handle campgrounds. I talked to Jay Smith, who is the Forest Restoration Director for Coconino County. I talked to Jay Smith, who is the Forest Restoration Director for Coconino County. His, uh, comments were, uh, difficult to hear. We're not really making very good progress. Uh, I think on, on, in the general category, we're, we're fantastic. Uh, flood responders, fantastic. But we're not very good at stopping what's making the floods. I wondered if people wanted to hear in a work session from Jay Smith. But honestly, I don't quite know what we do with the information. So I'll just throw it out there and we have thirty seconds, I guess, to deal with it. Uh, if anybody else would like to hear from Jay Smith, I would like to hear from him. Uh, just what's going on and if there's anything that, any perspective he can give us that might help, uh, in what we do. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Um, at this point, my clock shows five twenty-nine PM, so I'm a little hesitant to take a break for probably less than sixty seconds at this point. So why don't we just hold on and when it turns to five thirty, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Short, I am seeing all PNC members present except Commissioner Williams. Am I correct with that?
Madam Chair, I believe you are correct with that. Commissioner Williams did indicate that she would not be able to make it tonight.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, and it is five thirty. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Coconino County Planning and zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have fifteen days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. And with that, thank you all for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda tonight is the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Short, would you please lead us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. The second item on the agenda is the election of officers. It's hard to believe that a year has already gone by and we're doing this again. Um, I've not had a chance to talk with any of the other commissioners, so I want to reach out and ask Vice Chair Walters if he would be willing to serve in his capacity for another term.
Um, this is Vice Chair Walters. If, if it pleases everybody, I will.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walters. I am, this is Chair Ontiveris, and I will say that I am also willing to serve again for another term. But the decision will be made by our fellow commissioners. And so, um, I would ask somebody, one of our commissioners to make a motion, um, to elect a chair and a vice chair. Commissioner Ruggles?
I will do so. I would, uh, like to make a motion to re-elect, actually, Chair Ontiveros and Vice Chair. Let's see. I'm working for something here that, uh, on the screen. Let's see, let me rephrase that. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, elect the current chair and vice chair to the next term to lead the commission. How's that?
Okay, that, that'll work for a motion, Commissioner Ruggles. We're going to need a second now.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles to re-elect Chair Ontiveris and Vice Chair Walters to another term. Um, I've got a second by Commissioner Clifford. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And this is Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously and, um, I would just like to thank my fellow commissioners for your vote of confidence. The third item on the agenda is the approval of the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Um, I'll accept a motion in a second if there are no modifications, clarifications or corrections.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
I will, uh, second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Vice Chair Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles to approve the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And this is Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. The minutes of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two have been approved unanimously. The fourth item on the agenda is the consent agenda for case number CUP uh, twenty dash zero two four. I believe we can just move to a motion in a second on this without staff presentation. Am I correct on that, Mr. Short?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, you would be correct, but in this case, this, uh, this item was incorrectly posted. Uh, so this item will need to be continued.
Okay, to a date certain, which would be the July meeting?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, and that is July twenty-seventh, right?
July twelfth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we just talked about that. Okay, got it. Um, I'll accept a motion in a second to continue this to the July twelfth meeting, please.
I make a motion to continue case number CUP dash two zero, there's zero two four to July twelfth.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Vice Chair Walters, a second by Commissioner Ruggles to continue CUP two zero dash zero two four to July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And this is Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. CUP two zero dash zero two four is continued to July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The next item on the public hearing agenda is case number CUP twenty-one dash zero seven three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am just sharing my screen now. All right, can everyone see this all right and hear me okay?
Yes, we can't, we can see it and hear you okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening, everyone. It will not let me present. Hang on. There we go. Uh, this is case CUP twenty-one zero seven three. Uh, you've seen this one a couple of times now. We're coming back. Uh, just in case, uh, you aren't familiar, this is a two-point-zero-eight acre parcel in the planned community zone with CH ten thousand standards applied. Um, and their quest is a renewal for an RV park. They currently have ten spaces, uh, and a caretaker's quarters, and they're requesting modifications to add five storage spaces. To give the commission updates on this case, staff has received the SEAL survey from Martin Land Surveys. If you'll remember the study session last month, we had not received that yet. The buildings do appear to be within the property boundaries, and I will show you a screenshot, the sealed survey in just a moment. Uh, the applicant has plans to move all RV spots within the boundaries. Uh, they need to get building permits for that, uh, which they inquired about just this week and to my knowledge are getting started on that process. Um, the proposed storage spaces have been moved from the northern boundary of the parcel down to the southeast corner near the existing caretaker's quarters. Um, because staff only received this about a week after the study session, the applicant has not had time to move everything yet and is requesting a continuance to allow time for that. Here is the sealed survey. Um, as you can see, this line here is the property boundary. Here are the storage spaces that they're going to be adding. You can see this is just south of the caretaker's quarters. Uh, you might also notice that this access is no longer entirely on the property. Um, applicant has proposed a new throughway here and they're moving these three RV pads onto the property boundaries. And just to refresh your memory, I believe I showed you this at the study session, but this is an approximation by staff, just to give you an idea of how um, off the parcel viewer might be, uh, just so that you can kind of understand uh, what we were looking at before and what our current understanding is. Uh, so until we get more information and until the applicant has had a chance to get their building permits and move these spaces, staff is going to recommend a continuance of at least sixty days until August thirty-first. I believe the applicant is online to do that. And I'm seeing some raised hands, so I will turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Um, thank you. Uh, I'm not sure whose hand was raised first, but in my, in my order, Commissioner Ruggles, you are first, so please proceed.
I, actually, I think Vice Chair Walters, uh, raised his hand first.
Oh, okay, then we'll have Vice Chair Walters go first.
Thank you. And this is Vice Chair Walters. The, the question that I have is, um, now that we have accurately identified where their, their actual property is, how are we going to, number one, uh, remediate those areas that were previously used to, to bring them back into a condition that they, they should have been. And two, uh, how are we going to delineate the property line so that this wouldn't happen again?
That's an excellent question, Vice Chair Walters. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, I can let the applicant speak to this in a moment if they wish, but, uh, previously, if you'll remember, they did remove an RV site that was definitely off of the property uh, outside of the property boundaries and they returned it to the original site condition. Staff went out, took a picture of it. Uh, you cannot tell that an RV site had been there before. Um, so staff is expecting that, uh, the applicant would be able to do this with the other three spots as well when they move them. And to your question.
And the roadway, you know, so you have not only the spots, but you have the roadway and, and all that in that area that needs to be remediated and, and returned to a natural state.
Absolutely. And if you have any suggestions for the applicant, something that you would like to see when they come back to you, uh, I can write up a summary for them so that they have that to reference.
Well, the, the only thing that I'd like to suggest is that this has been um, an ongoing problem because it's a very odd site and, and it, and it's hard to, to identify where the boundaries are exactly. So I'd like for them to, to maybe put up a, um, a, a short fence or some, some sort of a delineating, um, line along those borders so that they, they and their tenants recognize what is theirs and what is the forest or, or a daughter, whoever. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make note of that.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Yeah, uh, yes, uh, something I'd like to ask Kelly about. I noticed in, in looking at the, um, the new survey lines that, uh, we're going to have several structures that, uh, uh, will need to have waivers or setbacks, uh, along with this, uh, CUP. Have, have you looked at that, um, relative to, um, the staff report and analysis?
This will definitely be included in the staff analysis, um, in sixty days when they are ready to come back to you. Um, but my current understanding is that they actually have a zero setback line, uh, just a historical thing, uh, from when they were operating. You know, back in the sixties or as far back as this goes. Uh, that's something that's been tagged on this parcel.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make very sure of where we were with the, um, uh, changes that we see and where the actual property lines exist. Um, you know, I am the one who opened this can of worms relative to this. So, um, if there's anything that can be added, that we'll make sure that, uh, we all get it right. I'd sure like to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Commissioner Best?
Yes, um, I think if we go over our list of, uh, conditions for campgrounds, we will find that we need fencing and that we need, um, communication, uh, from the applicant to his clients, telling them where they can go and where they can't go. If we go over that list, we'll take care of a number of problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best.
Okay, Ms. Bingham, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So, on, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Bingham at this time? Not seeing any. I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening. If so, please state your name and you're at, raise your hand or unmute and state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, and I'm, I'm not seeing any. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and accept a motion for a continuance.
I would like to make a motion for continuance, but unfortunately I don't, I didn't write that date down. If somebody popped that back up on the screen. Okay, I'd like to make a, um, a, a motion for a continuance of CUP dash two one dash zero seven three to the August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two hearing.
Okay, I will second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Vice Chair Walters, a second by Commissioner Ruggles to continue CUP twenty-one zero seven three to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And Chair, uh, this is Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. CUP twenty-one zero seven, seven three is continued to the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two PNC hearing. The next item on the agenda is CUP twenty-two dash zero three seven.
Hello, Madam Chair, that's me again. Let me share my screen with the new PowerPoint. All right, this is CUP twenty-two dash zero three seven. Can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this request is for a conditional use permit for a private eighty-five foot wireless telecommunications tower. Uh, this request is from Arizona Public Service. Uh, most of us know it as APS, uh, who provide utilities in this area. Their parcel is two-point-two-seven acres and it's on CH ten thousand. Again, this is in the Belmont area, so it's a planned community zone with the CH ten thousand standards applied. Again, this is in the Belmont area, so it's a planned community zone with the CH ten thousand standards applied. Here's an aerial photo of the property. Uh, you can see this is right off of Brannigan Park Road. Um, right off of the forty, so the tower will be visible from the forty. We'll have some photo simulations later in the presentation for you to look at. And just for a greater context, here's our vicinity map. This is just northwest of Belmont. So this facility, uh, was originally approved in twenty twenty, um, for a utility facility. Uh, it has already been fenced. There's a three hundred fifty by three hundred and three. Three hundred and fifty foot fenced area. Um, it contains multimodal facilities, a paved driveway and landscaping. Um, and that's due to the, the GRO that was also required for the site. Um, so the site, uh, as you'll see in a moment, um, already has all of this installed. Um, and it's looking up to code and up to the conditions that were imposed before. Uh, the monopole is needed for full functionality of the site. The applicant may be able to provide details about that later on in the presentation if you would like to hear from them. Um, but it is necessary to locate this on EPS property because it's a critical part of their electrical infrastructure. So they need the safety and the ax- access of having this onsite and not having co-location available. Here's a site plan that the applicant sent to me. You can see that the monopole is right here. It's located very close to the property lines within the fence area. Um, and they do have a letter from a certified engineer, uh, stating that it will not fall outside of the property lines. Here is the site as it currently is. You can see the installed landscaping. You can see there are already some telecommunications lines here. Um, you can see that it's fenced, um, and most of the equipment is not visible from the road. Uh, it's already has a driveway and you can see the sidewalk here. Uh, those would be the, the multimodal facilities that were referenced before. Here's some photo simulations from the applicant. The proposed tower is eighty-five feet tall. As you can see, this does kind of blend in with the poles that already exist. Here's another one from, uh, this is the center between the two lanes of the I forty. Uh, so as you're driving by, this is theoretically what the tower would look like from the I forty. Now getting into our preferred criteria, this proposed development does meet two of those. New sites on previously disturbed areas. Obviously, this is already a utility facility. It's already been disturbed, um, so it would meet that criteria. And it's also under a hundred feet in a commercial zone, uh, so it meets that criteria as well. It ranks about in the middle of the scale for our preferred criteria. And as far as disfavored criteria, um, it could potentially fall into one. Uh, criteria B because it is in a visual corridor. Um, and it could potentially block the view of the San Francisco Peaks. Uh, that being said, it's already on an existing utility facility. It does sort of blend into the poles. And it's going to be a non-reflective gray color, so it may be up to commission interpretation whether or not it meets that disfavored criteria. We did not receive any comments on this. Uh, for our citizen participation, you should have received the citizen participation plan as well. Here are the proposed conditions. Essentially, it shall conform to the approved site plan. Um, it shall be painted a gray non-reflective color. Um, they should obtain building permits, uh, and it should be removed if it becomes obsolete and there shall be no towers. I'm sorry, no lights on the tower. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty-two. I'm sorry, that is supposed to say zero, three, seven with the recommended conditions and their. Uh, the proposed conditions here. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, Ms. Bingham, I am not seeing any, so I'm going to ask if the applicant. Or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission on this case. Uh, if so, please state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask the applicant or the representative if you have received the staff report with the proposed conditions. And if you do agree with those. Uh, Ms. Vermillion, I see your hand raised. Are you the APS representative? Ms. Vermillion, can you hear me? If you can, we are unable to hear you. Okay, Ms. Vermillion, can you hear me? Now, this is, this is Chair Aunt Taveras.
Madam Chair, I think she is now unmuted. I think she was muted before.
Right. On, Ms. Vermillion, would you like to address the commission on the ca- on this case this evening? Okay, I'm thinking we're having technical difficulties because she's unmuted, but we're not able to hear her. Mr. Short, do you have a suggestion?
Madam Chair, I guess she can try to speak again, um. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure what to, to do to move forward. I know we can approve a case without the applicant speaking.
This is Vice Chair Walters. Um, I see that she came up on chat.
She is on chat. She could, uh, she could make a statement on chat, Madam Chair.
Um, yes, if, uh, Ms. Vermillion, if you would like to do that, um. Please do state your name and address for the record. And again, if, I, I would like to know if you have read the staff report, seen the proposed conditions and if you agree with them. Okay, I'm, I'm thinking we're still having some technical, um. Difficulties here.
This is Vice Chair, oh, there she goes.
Yeah, please go ahead. Oh, here we go. We've got, okay, hold on. I believe she has communicated via chat. Um. Okay, so we've got your name and address, um, Ms. Vermillion. Let me ask you this. Have you read the staff report and do you agree with the conditions contained therein? Okay, on the. I, I'm going to read on for the record. That I have from this Vermillion. My name is Julie Vermillion with the applicant. CVL Consultants located at four, four, five, five, zero, North Twelfth Street in Phoenix. We have read and agreed with all proposed conditions from the staff report. Okay, with that. I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand or unmute and I will call on you. And I am not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and close it to. Um, public comment and open it at commission level. Commissioner Best, would you please start the discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can make the conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
I can make the conditions.
Okay, Commissioner Burton.
I can make the findings.
Okay, Vice Chair Walters.
I too can make the findings. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles.
I can also make the findings. One, just one comment on it. Um, given the, uh, towers that exist, bring the transmission line in, uh, to that substation. Uh, I think this, uh, telecommunications tower is going to have, well, literally be unseen. I'm out there by that facility once a week and, uh. I think that, uh, nobody's even going to notice it's there given what's there already, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. This is Vice Chair Aunt Taveras. I can also make the findings for approval. And, uh, Commissioner Ruggles should beat me to that comment because, um. Comparatively speaking, you're not even going to notice it in the mix of the, the rest of the development there. So with that, I will accept a motion in a second, please.
Make a motion for approval of. CUP dash two, two, dash, zero, three, seven.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Vice Chair Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP zero, three, uh, twenty-two, zero, three, seven. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton.
Aye.
Vice Chair Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Aye.
And this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also vote aye. CUP twenty-two dash zero, three, seven has been approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is. CUP twenty-two dash zero, five, one.
Madam Chair, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff. And for case CUP twenty-two, zero, five, one, which is a request for a conditional use permit for a distillery. Uh, processed as a cottage industry in the Parks area with property owner. And applicant Jacob Newton from Parks. This case was not. It was not publicly noticed correctly, and so the commission can't make a decision on it tonight. And I thank the commission for patience with staff and allowing for a meeting on. July twelfth to look at the case again, and so with that, staff is recommending a continuance of the case to July twelfth.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Schwartz. Uh, because of the circumstances, we're going to go ahead and move to a motion in a second for a continuance, please.
Hey, I would like to make a motion to continue. CUP twenty-two dash zero, fifty-one. Until the special meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission on the twelfth of July.
I second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Vice Chair Walters to continue CUP twenty-two. Zero, five, one to July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton.
Aye.
Vice Chair Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Aye.
And this is Chair Aunt Taveras. CUP twenty-two dash zero, five, one has been continued to July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. The final item on our agenda this evening is for public here, uh, cases is CUP twenty-two. Dash zero, one, one, two, zero, one, nine. And zero, two, one, two, zero, three, four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case is the CO Bar Solar K, uh, solar array. And I will see if my slideshow will move forward correctly. Seems to be an issue tonight. There we go. Okay, in this case, the property owners of Babbitt Ranches of Flagstaff. The applicant is CO Bar Solar K LLC and CO Bar Solar LLC of Newcastle, Delaware. The representative is Tom Fitzgerald of Clanera LLC in Boise, from Boise, Idaho. Uh, the size of the parcel is twelve thousand acre portion of two parcels that total twenty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-seven acres. The zoning is general. And, uh, this request is for twenty-three separate CUPs that would include the following components. Um, and these are all up to, up to fourteen utility scale photovoltaic. Solar power generation facilities. A battery energy storage system, a substation to connect to the five hundred KV lines. Lay down yards and parking areas, operations and maintenance buildings and access roads. This is a vicinity map showing the project site. It is, uh, about nine miles outside of Valley, east of Valley. Or what is now called Grand Canyon Junction. It's on the Babbitt Ranches. And I, before I got too far in, I wanted to, uh, kind of show you some of the energy products, projects that we have. In the works right now. Of course, Perrin Ranch is already operational. Uh, down here is the Chevlon Butte Wind Farm, which is being constructed as we speak. I believe they have just started to, uh, pour their forms. For the, uh, towers, the generators. Uh, and then we have the B-Rex Solar. And, uh, and wind farm up here, which I believe, uh, they are working on getting building permits fairly soon. And we have the Clanera side right now, which is the CO Bar site. And then in the future, we're looking at this RWE Met Towers site. Uh, they have Met Towers there now and they expect to, to install a wind farm or apply for a wind, wind farm in the future. And then we have the Long Point site out here that would be a wind farm. They have, uh, Met Towers approved for there. And then the Cowgirl site has Met Towers approved for there. Uh, I talked to the developer recently and he indicated that they may, they, they wanted to put solar there. Uh, similar to what we have with this Clanera CO Bar K site. Uh, probably smaller, but still quite a large site, uh, just because of its proximity to the highway and visibility. And this map shows, uh, all of the sections in this project and each one of them is designated with a CUP number. So you can see the CUP numbers each designated for a separate section. And this is the site plan. One eighty is, uh, down here. You can see one eighty in black. There, this is the Arizona Trail in green up here. The applicant's providing a five hundred foot setback from the, uh, solar array to the Arizona Trail. You can see two different accesses here, one in this forest road, the other one up the power line. And as requested by the commission and staff. Uh, they have widened this corridor on these, these sides to half a mile. And this is a picture of the corridor. This is, this is on the site. It's a picture of the corridor that goes through the site. This is a photograph on the north part of the site that is most, is more covered with pinyon trees and with juniper trees. And this is more to the south side of the site. It's obviously a very big site. Uh, and this is much, this area is much flatter and not as forested. As I indicated on, on the site plan, there are two access points to US Highway eighty, one eighty. Uh, one is that forest road, the other is the power line, and each of those would require a. An incursion permit from ADOT, uh, for the access to Highway one eighty. This is, uh, so the applicant has provided this documented. It's called the CO Bar Solar Complex Construction Management Best Practices. And what this document does is it provides details about. How construction of the site will occur. It addresses grading, cuts and fills, material staging. Vegetation, uh, the vegetation plan, the water quality, environmental best practices and transportation. So this document will guide the way that the property is developed. And in, and make sure that it, uh, meets the best management practices. And I wanted to, and this is a, this, this shows the, the power lines is kind of addresses the power lines on the site. Uh, primarily, everything would be installed underground or in some cases, my understanding is it would be laid on top of the ground. Uh, however, the applicant has requested that the collector lines, and those are shown on red down here on the map. Uh, would be installed above, above ground on power poles. That's because. That's because it's very difficult sometimes to install these underground. It's very costly and also just very difficult because of the terrain. And if you look on the site plan down here, I'm showing a portion of it. You can see the red lines. These are the red lines. There are several right here that go back to the KV line. One reaches up to here, and there is one that goes out to here. So those lines, the applicant has requested those be an overhead power lines. I did kind of a measurement of it. It looks like the nearest one, which is this one down here, would be more than two miles from US Highway eighty, one-eighty, and probably not very visible. The applicant has submitted an environmental assessment. It indicates that the property has been used for cattle ranching since the eighteen hundreds. And that ranch will continue to operate. There had been very few previous uses on the site. Basically, the ranching and building associated with that. A pipeline, there's a cell tower on the side with solar panels, and there's obviously the electrical transmission corridor, the KV, the KV, five hundred KV line. The indication in this report is that there are no significant hazard, hazardous materials, petroleum products, or spills that have occurred on this site in the past. And the applicant has provided a biological resources memo that covers many things. It's completed by SWICA. The method, the methodology in this survey basically included a, it concluded a pedestrian survey to evaluate the occurrence of special status plants and animal species. So that was a trip out to the site to, to kinda walk around and, and, and look at these things. The survey did not include species-specific surveys or systematic surveys for protected biological components such as bird's nest or vegetation density. So these are the results of the survey, the pedestrian survey. They found two plant species covered under Arizona Native Plant Law. And those would require a permit prior to land clearing activities. They also found six avian species covered by, under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. And that would require a permit for removal of any nest unless the nest is empty. When they're on the site visit, they did not observe any nest at that time. The applicant is proposing that removal of trees occur at a time when birds would not be nesting. Other things that were observed on the site were burrows that might be occupied by badgers, foxes, gophers, or rabbits. There was also elk and coyote sign. The applicant, or the SWICA did not see any prey dog colonies on the site at this time. Although it is possible there are some there. This slide addresses species of special concern, and these are identified by the US Fish and Wildlife Service. And these particular four species have been observed, documented within five miles of the project site. That is the bald eagles, golden eagles, paragon falcons, and Arizona rabbit bush. The raptors, these three raptors are expected to pass through the site, but not to nest on the site. The rabbit bush may occur on the site, but it is not protected on private land. In terms of federally listed endangered species, the biological report conclusion was that none of the twenty-seven species listed by the US Fish and Wildlife Service are endangered, threatened, or non-essential experimental populations for Coquenino County are likely to occur in the project area. As you know, there are wildlife movement corridors through this site. In fact, the project's located along the east boundary of the Coquenino Plateau, Kaibab National Forest Wildlife Linkage. This linkage connects the pinyon juniper areas with grassland habitat, and it's used by elk, mule deer, mountain lion, northern gosse, and pronghorn. There are also other Coquenino County Wildlife Movement Areas on this site. That includes the Dog Knobs, Ebert Mountain Government Prairie Movement Area, the Sandy South Ram, San Francisco Peaks, Woody Ridge, Belmont Movement Area. Now, these are diffuse, as, as described in the, the memo and the study. These are diffuse or broad movement areas as opposed to narrow, well-defined areas. And as you have just seen, the applicant has provided up to one-half mile gaps in the solar array as recommended by AGFD. And these are those, these are the closed corridors. This is the mule deer migration corridor. You can see it, they, it runs more on the east side of the site and is a little bit more linear. The red shows high-use areas, the orange medium, and the gray low-use areas. And the same with this, is the prong, pronghorn migration corridors. And it is more in the center and on the west side of the site. In terms of cultural resources, the cultural resources report was based entirely on a desktop review of existing data. There were no ground pedestrian surveys for cultural resources in this case. The report indicates that there's very little data available for this site, completing the desktop survey. In fact, the only things that they were able to find were, were two sweat lodges used by Navajos in the historic era. So there's not a lot of information on the site currently. Their conclusion was that there are likely fewer than ten cultural resource sites per acre in the grassland area and likely more sites in the pinyon juniper woodlands area. So if you do the math on that, over nineteen sections, about nineteen sections, that could add up to quite a few sites. So because of that, staff has included Cultural Resource Condition Number Eight, which would require an archaeological and historic resource field study prior to development of each phase of the project. So if they wanna do Phase One, they complete the study, then they can do Phase One. And then they complete another study before they move on to the second phase or more phases. That would also include a cultural resource management plan to mitigate impacts to any known or discovered archaeological, historical, or cultural sites or artifacts. This condition also indicates that all potentially eligible ARHP sites shall be avoided if possible. Or if the applicant, or that the applicant shall abide by all applicable laws and regulations regarding treatment of the site if it can't be avoided. In terms of scenic resources, there are two scenic resources identified in the Rio. That's the Renewable Energy Ordnance, which has just come into effect. And these include US Highway one-eighty. The closest solar panels to US Highway one-eighty are about fifteen hundred feet from the highway. And the Arizona National Scenic Trail, and the setback for those from the solar array is five hundred feet. So in terms of photo simulations, the applicant came to staff about two years ago, and at that time, we did not have a Rio. We didn't, didn't have a lot of things. You know, a lot of ways to look at these. And realizing that they were pretty low to the ground as opposed to wind turbines, staff requested that certain points along one-eighty be, that photo sims be provided from certain points along one-eighty. Those are called key observation points. As we went along and the Rio was in the works, we did see some need for other things, for some other key observation points. So we requested some more from the Arizona Trail and also from Red Butte. And finally, consistent with the Rio again, we did ask the applicant for a statement about the visibility of the solar array from South Ram Ranches. It's about one mile from the site. And it's the nearest residential area. So we did ask them for a statement about that. We did not ask for additional so, photo sims, since it was pretty far in the process at that point, and they indicated that it would not be visible. And that is something that does make sense, since they aren't very tall. So these are the first ones that we got from the applicant. They're located along Highway one-eighty. You can see four different points, and I'll go through those and show you what they have provided for us. So this is point number one. You can see existing condition. You can also see the, what, what it would look like after the project was developed. And they're indicating, you can kinda see the point, the area that it would cover in the direction it would go. And they're indicating that it would not be visible. And this is KLP two, looking east from Highway one-eighty along the corridor. You can also see that they're indicating that it would not be visible, would be located in this area right over here, and it is not visible. And this is KLP three. They are not indicating where the location of it is, but they're showing that it would not be visible from this site as well. And finally, KLP four. They're indicating that it would be in this location, but as you can see, it's not, it's not visible according to the photo sims. Okay, so they'd had two additional photo sims, and these are from, these are KLP one and two along the Arizona Trail. So as you can see, this is the existing condition on the top slide. On the bottom one, you can see them along this area right here. So they're about, like I said, five hundred feet away. And you can certainly see them. One of the things that does seem to be missing from this photo sim is that there should be a fence around the, the the array here, and I don't see the fence. I believe it would be a chain link fence eight feet tall, which tends to be less visible because of the color of it. And this is another one along the Arizona Trail. This is existing condition on the top, and on the bottom, you can see the solar array down through this area. It kinda blends in with the background vegetation a little bit. And then we also asked for one more photo sim that I didn't mention before, and that is from Red Butte. This is something that was requested by, I believe, the Walupi tribe, who had, had said this is a sacred site for them, and they wanted to, you know, see what it would, what different, these different projects would look like from here. So as you can see up here, it's not very visible. Down here, it would be along this area. They're pointing out. It does appear to be possibly visible in this area. It's very difficult to tell. In terms of citizen participation, property owners within one mile of the project boundary and other interested agencies and entities were notified and invited to a virtual neighborhood meeting held on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. Some of the concerns were visual impacts, property values, glare from the panels, availability of power to local residents and to Arizona, fire risk, decommissioning process, traffic and water runoff. And that is always kind of a concern of residents. They don't have power. They see all this power coming in, and they would like to hook up to it, but it's not always practical to do that. From the notes and from the meeting, it appeared that most commenters did, did support the project. Seventeen Native American groups were notified about the project. No comments were received. Staff has not received any comments on this as well. These are the findings for conditional use permit. They've been addressed in the staff report. If the commission has any questions about those, we can discuss them. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty-two zero-one-one through zero-one-nine and twenty-one to thirty-four with the recommended conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Vice Chair Walter, excuse me, Vice Chair Walters, please go ahead.
This is Vice Chair Don Walters. I would like to go back to the migratory patterns that you showed earlier on a couple of screens. I think one was elk and mule deer, and the other was antelope.
Vice Chair Walters, this is the one with the antelope, pronghorn.
Okay, so, and these, the, let's look at the antelope first. So just to the left of the center of the screen, and these blocks are numbered, there's a darker green that's in a, that completely overlays one of the red high-use corridor areas there. Do you see that?
This is here, or?
Oh, more, more up. Doesn't look like they've addressed that at all. I think we talked about that in our last meeting. And, and what I'd like to know is, is if those are gonna be completely blocked, how are the pronghorn going to migrate around that area? What's, what's the logic there?
Vice Chair Walters, if you remember when we had the study session last month, Hannah Griscum was here and discussed that. And I think it was indicated at some point that, that these are corridors that have lasted a long time, possibly centuries. But she also said that these are adaptive animals that can find a way around things. So it would be presumed that they would move around like this. If you remember from the, and also from the fishing game, this is not shown on here. I'm sorry, the, from that study session, Arizona Fishing Game had requested that they widen the corridors in this area. They, I don't remember them addressing widen the corridor here. And the, and this isn't, I apologize, but this is not showing the half-mile corridor here. But I think possibly Wildlife Planet could answer that a little better than I can. But that's my understanding of this issue.
Yeah, this is Jessica Simmons. Oh.
I, I requested to have the, the Arizona Fishing Game migratory expert to weigh in on this if possible. Is that, is that something that was requested of them, or, or did they get lost in the, in the mix?
Vice Chair Walters, I don't believe that that may not have been requested of them. I don't. Jessica, did we make that request? I know I didn't.
No, I did have many chats with him about this project in preparing for this, but no, he's not here tonight.
So again, Ms. Simmons, I, I have some concerns about this migratory route. I don't know why it's constricted to that point, if it's has to do with, with terrain or those sort of things, but I have about a forty-year history working with different animal wildlife groups on a voluntary basis. And, and I've learned over the years that these migratory patterns, although they can be adjusted somewhat, they, they are pretty definitive. And I'm, I'm concerned about this one, 'cause in that area, that is the only route really listed for those pronghorn migrations. Or for the pronghorn migration.
Yes.
You wanna speak to that?
Yes, yeah, that, that's a good observation. It does look very constricted there. I discussed this with Game and Fish, with Hannah, and with their pronghorn expert about this, and what Mr. Schwartz said is true. They're thinking that they could go around that block. Or another thing they said is that they're thinking that Or, um, another thing they said is that they're thinking that once this project is in place, the majority of the movement might end up swinging around the west side where you can see that really wide red area around the west side. Yeah. So that's what they are thinking about that when we discussed it.
Hmm. Interesting. Okay. Well, I guess that's the answer. I'm going to get it. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Vice Chair Walters. Uh, Commissioner Best, your hand was raised next.
Well, I, I would like to second Commissioner Walters' concerns, and I know I also brought this up at the study session. We see in the center of the page here, a very heavily used red area. Uh, a lot of animals are going up there. And there's no other way to keep going north in their traditional pattern, except through that section, which is section twenty-three. That sort of doesn't pass the common sense test. I, I know that antelope, you know, I, not an expert in the field, but I know that antelope are very visual. They don't go over fences, um. They, uh, you know, we've had to do a lot of fence work around the southwest to keep their migrate grading, uh, patterns open. And, uh, frankly, I'm, I'm not comfortable with, and I'll have to talk to other commissioners, but it, it just doesn't pass the common sense test that there would be all this migration in the middle and nowhere to go. I assume that there is some constriction, I believe, to the belief, when I looked on the map, the best I could tell was that to the west of section twenty-three, it's heavily wooded and there may be a, uh, a low mountain there. But I assume it's, I assume it's so heavily constricted because of terrain, and we brought this question up at the study session. And I was hoping for some better answer tonight. So I, I'll just express, uh, uh, discomfort.
Uh, Commissioner Best, I, I can say that we did, we got comments from Arizona Game and Fish, and their request was that we widen these corridors. Now, I'm not a, obviously I'm not a wildlife expert. Uh, but obviously Jessica has spoken many times with the experts, the antelope experts, the other wildlife experts on these corridors. That was the request that they made looking at this site plan. They requested that we widen this corridor right here, the both of these by half to half a mile, which they have done that. So my understanding, like as, um, Hannah Griscum said, and as Jessica has said, that they would, they are adaptive animals. They do move around. They do find other ways to move around. This is kind of a narrow corridor through here. Um, I was going to bring, I could bring up the slopes map so you can get a better idea of the terrain. Uh, but as I look at the slopes map, I can't really make a judgment call on why exactly they go where they go according to these corridors.
I, like I say, just doesn't pass the common sense test that there are be uh, high, high use corridor that dead ends. Uh, and there aren't particularly large gaps to let them through. We have these other half mile gaps, but they're seen to be maybe a little more constricted here. And, uh, I don't know, are, are we, are we passing these, um, C U Ps? Is this a separate C P twenty-three?
Mr. Best, there are twenty-three separate C U Ps in this application. So these are, each of these is a separate one. We, they really haven't been separated. The applicant hasn't asked to, uh, to separate them.
Oh, we could.
Uh, I think you, I, I think you probably could. Uh, I guess I, I mean, they are separate C U Ps, um.
No. Okay, well, uh, let's, let's, uh, keep the conversation going if anybody else has any comments and, uh, but that, that just doesn't, doesn't make sense.
Um, okay, this is Chair Ontiveris, and I don't know if the other commissioners are looking at the chat. But there is a comment on there. It says, "Good evening. This is Tom Fitzgerald with Clenara. For some reason, I am registered as Steve Conrad. I'd be happy to add some commentary on this subject when you'd like." On Mr. Fitzgerald, I would invite you to add commentary on this subject at this time because I think it's timely in this conversation. So please, um, state your name and address and provide your comments.
Good, good morning, uh, or good afternoon, Chairwoman and, uh, planning and zoning commissioners. Thank you all for the time this evening. This is Tom Fitzgerald. I'm the Director of Development for Clenara and will be representative for the C O bar complex in front of you tonight. My address is thirty-four Rustic Terrace in Green River, Colorado, eight zero four two four. Um, I, it sounds like there's quite a bit of questioning around, I believe it's section twenty-one. Um, that, you know, Vice Chair Walter is, uh, was calling attention to.
It's section twenty-three.
Uh, thank you. You're right. It's section twenty-three. Um, I'll just go ahead and give a, a few initial comments on it, and then I'd also like to invite Billy Cardasco up here to make some comments about it as well. Uh, I think the, the first comment is that my understanding of that corridor, that red area is really where Babbitts actually gone in cleared a lot of the ground already, cutting back the pine and pine and junipers that's grown in there. So it's really that open space that the animals are using currently. Uh, we also had presented this plan in front of the Arizona Fishing Game, I think, on several occasions, and they opined that they were comfortable with this footprint as depicted, with the exception of the widening of the two corners to the, uh, western arrays, which we have done. Um, and finally, I would also add that, you know, I do think that there is some adaptation to these species and, you know, although it doesn't look very wide on this area, we are talking about migration quarters that are quarter of a mile wide. So that's almost thirteen hundred feet or nearly four football fields in width on every quarter that is opening up into open space that is greater than a mile on either side of these. So from an adaptation perspective, from an open space perspective, I think that there is ample opportunity for this quarter to still be used despite some, uh, uh, probably changing in terms of the pattern and behavior by the animals. Um, so with that, I'd maybe turn the floor over to, to Mr. Billy Cardasco, if he has any other questions. Uh, yeah, maybe before I do that, I'll just pause and see if anyone has, uh, direct comments or questions for me.
Um, Mr. Fitzgerald, this is Vice Chair, or excuse me, Chair Ontiveris. Uh, I'm, I'm wondering if it's possible for you to somehow get a little closer to the speaker. You're, you're coming off, uh, pretty, um, like pretty distant and it's, there's quite a bit of echo. I, I do believe that I heard all of your comments, but I do want all of the other commissioners and our, and the record to be able, the recording to be able to pick all of this up. So if possible, if you guys could move a little closer to the speaker, I'd appreciate it. On at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Vice Chair Walters if he has any comments or further questions for Mr. Fitzgerald at this time on that topic.
This is Vice Chair Walters and, and I think I heard most of what Mr. Fitzgerald said. I, I agree with the echo and, uh, um, um, the, the lack of clarity on, on some of the, the things that were said, but the, I go back to the, to the same concern that migratory quarter goes down to a very large area there. And, and, um, it, in, it's appears to be completely blocked. Now, I don't know if that's just a, a big open area in the grasslands there or, uh, that they can, they can shift that migration around there. I, I don't know what the game and fish, um, looked at and what they had to say. That's why I requested to have them as part of this, uh, conversation. But right now I'm, I'm pretty uncomfortable with this and, and I don't feel like I've gotten a good answer to my questions. And so far I've only looked at the, the pronghorn map. I haven't looked at the other map. So, um, and, and as this is all one, um, C U P, it's, it, I'm, I'm not in a real good, comfortable position at this point.
Thank you for the feedback. Are you able to hear me better at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very well. Um, just in a, a brief response to your comment, I, I think one other important factor to note about these maps in particular that we're looking at is that these maps were generated by the coloring of one or a handful of animals out of a substantially larger herd. And these collars are only tracking the data of those individuals. It is not tracking the data of the entire herd and therefore is not necessarily showing the migration pattern of the entire species throughout this range land, but simply those specific animals. It's highly possible that those specific animals, uh, become stuck in their patterns of behavior, just like humans do, uh, and use that same path that they use over and over again. So it's possible that is one animal that is generated is migration quarter in question here. Um, I understand your concern. Just, just to make a, a comment there, I, I do believe that all of these applications are uh, being processed as individual C U Ps. If there's no further quema- questions for me, I do see that Commissioner Best has his hand up, so, uh, maybe I, I could pause for his comment.
Um, okay, before, before we go there, I am going to ask Vice Chair Walters if, if you've got any other questions at this time or comments before I move to Commissioner Best.
Well, I, I'll just expand here a little bit. The, the, um, concern that I have in, in, in Mr. Fitzgerald hadn't made me any more comfortable, um, by just a few animals being part of this study. Um, you, you know, that, that could can add to your credibility on this or, or detract from it. Um, we have a situation here where we, we have animals that, that depend on these migratory routes, especially when we have, um, um, weather events and those sort of things. And, and, and if there is some sort of obstruction out here that's narrowed that migratory route, and now we're going to block that route, and we're saying that they're going to have to ship all the way to the west, so they'd come down there, you know, a few miles down and then have to ship back to the north and then back to the west. I, I'm just not comfortable with that answer. So, um, I, I would also like to look at the, the elk, um, um, migratory route, elk and, and, and mule deer, but, but again, when we we have these conversations, you know, prior to these meetings, and we ask for, for the experts to weigh in on this, it, it, it's pretty important that we try to do that. Um, I see there's a, a letter that's popped up here from, from game and fish and, and I can see the heading, so we need to scroll down a little bit, I guess, and see what's saying here.
Uh, and, uh, Vice Chair Walters, I wanted to say this actually is, I know there's a lot of, I mean, there's hundreds of pages, I think, in the staff report, but this was included in the packet. Uh, so it is in the packet and there are many things in here. These are the, the recommendations. Uh, I know that uh, Jessica Simmons, our Wildlife Planner, did work with game and fish to clarify these. And that was their clarification is that those two corridors on that Andy widened to half a mile. I think their, their primary concern, and I'll let Jessica talk about this as well, but what I, I heard was that they were more concerned about uh, the pronghorn moving around this area by these than they were kind of in the middle here. Uh, so, uh, and Jessica can speak more on that as well. But I did want to show you that we did receive comments from them. Uh, the applicant has addressed those comments and they're pretty extensive. Uh, but they were, um, they were, uh, okay with how, you know, they, they approved of how the applicant had addressed their comments.
Would you bring up the, the, uh, the other map, please? So this is the pronghorn. Would you?
This is the mule deer corridors. It's, it runs more on the east side of the site. As you can see, this part goes through, this part's outside.
And there's where they've opened up those corners. Is that what I'm seeing there with the arrows?
Yeah, each of the corners, uh, some of them have, my understanding is like a half mile corridors, most of them are quarter mile corridors through here. They vary according to what kind of geography there is. This is wider, but I believe most of them are quarter mile corridors.
Okay, thank you. At this time, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Um, thank you, Vice Chair Walters. Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, I concur with, uh, Vice Chair Walters, uh, you know, we're, we're given information here. We're given a map. In my opinion, uh, the map is not consistent with what we're trying to do. So, uh, we noticed this some time ago at, at the, uh, at the study session, uh, we requested more information and we're just not getting in any more information. We're just being told that, uh, that's the way it is. And, uh, it, it just doesn't make sense to me, looking at that map, that all those animals would go up into a dead end. Especially an animal that we know is so visually sensitive. I mean, we see, we see, uh, mule deer walking through town all the time. We see elk. Uh, we don't see antelope wandering around near human habitation. They're, they're my, you know, my, um, I'm not an expert, but my understanding, just from being around northern Arizona for forty years, uh, is that they are a sensitive animal and, uh, the, the information before us, to me, just does not make sense. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Short, this is Chair Ontiveris. Would you please pull up the letter that you previously had up and go to the section that you have highlighted? Because I believe it specifically talked about, uh, section twenty-three there. And I just want that, I just want to see, and I want everyone else to see what that said.
See if we can find the correct part.
Okay, hold on. There you go. Okay, so incorporate a half mile gap. I'm looking at the paragraph there around the adjacent land parcels twenty-three as potentially having wildlife permeable challenges. Um, center. Okay, so on, okay, so on this paragraph, go back to that, Mr. Short, please.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Doing different things here.
Okay, so on that, uh, the paragraph right above fencing, okay, where it says incorporate, okay, there. Okay, so parcels twenty-three and twenty-seven are within the mule deer corridor incorporating one half mile gaps would promote, would promote wildlife permeability for mule deer and pronghorn. Were those half mile gaps in here, were they, were they incorporated into the map that we're looking at now? Like after this letter, after the applicant got this letter, was there any modification done as a result of this letter?
Can I, can I pipe in here? This is Jessica Simmons, because this is a little confusing.
Okay, yes, Ms. Simmons, if you would, please, because I, I would like clarity. Yes.
Yeah, Bob, if you could go back to that letter, that'd be helpful. Um, reading this paragraph to me personally was very confusing because when they just say section twenty-one or section twenty-three, there are, this project goes over two townships. So there are two sections twenty-one and two sections twenty-three. So I drove over to the game and fish office and physically handed them a map and said, "Please circle exactly where you want these gaps incorporated." And they did that for me. And yes, Clenara did incorporate all the gaps they asked for.
But the section that we are talking about, this is Commissioner Best, does not have half mile.
Yeah, so in this paragraph, section twenty-three is the eastern one, the one in the mule deer. If you look at the last sentence, it says parcels twenty-three and twenty-seven are within a mule deer corridor. That's why this is, the way this is written was very confusing.
This is Vice Chair Walters. So what you're telling me is that they did not address the migratory blockage through twenty-three on the pronghorn mount.
Not the section twenty-three we're talking about, no. The, the game and fish, they were really way more concerned with the passage around the west and around that section twenty-nine that's sticking out there, the westernmost parcel. Uh, westernmost section. And so, uh, in here, uh, back at the letter, um, oh yeah, so if we look at this map, if you if you, yeah, the one, the one Bob is pointing at, the one all the way to the left, they were concerned about that and they did expand those two, yes, the ones Bob is pointing at. Um, they expanded those from a court, well, first they expanded them to a quarter mile, um, and then they furthermore expanded them to a half mile. And then I, I'd have to have, if, if you went back to the letter, then there's the, uh, yeah, thanks. And then, uh, twenty-three and twenty-seven were mule deer. And they, they put those gaps in. And then, yeah.
So scroll up on that letter and let's see if there's something that addresses the, the pronghorn on her.
The, those were, that, back at that last.
Okay, stop right there. So that, that first, uh, bulleted paragraph says on the last sentence down there that they, they, uh, upon project implementation, if the actual footprint of infrastructure does not need to fully utilize entire areas defined in these plans, that we would recommend keeping those areas as open space to decrease potential impacts for wildlife. And, and in this situation, this is a total impact to that, that migratory route. And it's not at the beginning of it where, where it would typically ship them to the west. It's in the center of it. So they're going to come all the way down there and find that they're blocked. And my question was, is they, are they able to go around it to the east or the west? Or, or what? Or do they have to go turn around, go back to the north and then shift around to the main migratory area? And, and I, I know that he said that this might be three or four or five animals. But that, in my mind, that would be representative of what the animals in that area typically do. And, and I'm just not comfortable with all the answers that I'm getting in that one particular area.
If we look, if, uh, short, if you can zoom in on that map you're showing right now, they, Clinera supplied uh, the distances between all the, um, the corridors there. And i- if we, it's written very small, but if we zoom in, we can see that there, they do have, it's not a half mile, but they do have room to get around that one.
Give me a second to bring, but that map is, I cannot zoom in on that map. When it's on the slide projector, as far as I know.
While you guys are playing with that, I'd like to point out that, uh, when I look at, when I look at twenty-three, I look to the west, well, that's, uh, let me comment when we get back to that map. Are you going to stay on this map for a second?
Yes, this is, I want to zoom in on a little bit, which, where are we zooming in?
Yeah, when we look to the left of twenty-three, I see a wooded area and from my limited, what I read in the newspaper, uh, knowledge of pronghorns, they're not going to like that. And there's, does seem to be a corridor coming right down through twenty-three to the east and the west of that corridor, there seems to be terrain and vegetation that would not be conducive to them. So I, I'm just not seeing if I am a pronghorn, how can I stay out in the open, which they like to do, and get to the north?
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best, um, and Vice Chair Walters. Um, Mr. Fitzgerald, I see your hand raised. Do you, would you like to comment on this particular subject now?
Sorry about the delay. I was just trying to get the computer off mute. Yes, I, I, I would like to address uh, some of these comments. Actually, I invite Mr. Cardasco to actually come up and speak if you don't mind, uh, Chairwoman.
No, that would be fine. And I'm going to again ask if you guys can move closer to the speaker, because we've got, you guys are echoing. It sounds like you're in an echo chamber, like a cave.
Yeah. This is, um, thank you. Uh, this is Bill Cardasco, uh, twenty-seven twelve, North Marion Drive, Flagstaff, Arizona. Um, and I, I work for Babbitt Ranches. I, uh, are you able to hear me pretty good?
Yes, that, that is much better, Mr. Cardasco. Thank you, and please proceed.
Okay, well, um, I guess there would be a couple topics. Uh, first off, I might want to just tell you a little bit of history here, uh, in this particular area. So, where that corridor that you see where the, the pronghorn comes up from the south on the western side of the map there, I don't, maybe we could pull the pronghorn map up. But anyhow, was interesting because it was the only location on highway one eighty, uh, that didn't have right away fences. Uh, and so for so many years, however many years, uh, one eighty was there and, and of course, the right away fences. Uh, pronghorn just started rolling, rolling alongside the fences and then breaking through at that location. Generations went by, of course, um, with that behavior and probably imprinted it on the next generations of, of pronghorn. It was interesting because we had been very active, uh, with the pronghorn over on the cataract and SP ranches. By the way, I've been involved with the, uh, pronghorn on Babbitt Ranches, uh, since, uh, the, uh, let's see, late eighties. Uh, when we did our first project nineteen eighties, when we did our first project north of Wapackee, uh, when the fence line went in delineating between the national monument and, uh, the seal bar on the east side there. So, I've been involved with the pronghorn at every single level for, so however many years that is, um, thirty years plus. And, um, I know these experts that you're talking about, so I wish they were on the phone, but I'll do, do my best to kind of give you a little bit of the rundown on that. So, that corridor on the highway there didn't have right away fences. Uh, and what happened is, is I had been out one day, uh, starting our, uh, fuel wood management program in that area, uh, and there were some pronghorn on one side of the highway. Uh, when I went out the next day, those, those same pronghorn were on the other side of highway. It was very coincidental, but ADOT had called, uh, a very, very short period of time after that and said that it was time for them to take the cattle guards out on highway one eighty and put right away fences, uh, through that area. Uh, and it was clear that, uh, by doing that would have shut off any other future, uh, you know, uh, access through, through, across that highway, uh, from the south to the north. So I, uh, went to the owners of Babbitts and suggested that, uh, we don't fence the south side of that highway. And then on the north side, that we would actually build the fence line about a hundred yards off the highway. And, and the reason was that way, because we didn't need to graze on the south side of the highway. Uh, they were going to shut us off anyway with the right away fences. We have some private land, there's some state over there as well. But on the north side, I was like, you know what, these guys already know how to cross the highway, they're doing it. Uh, we just need to get them off the highway plenty far enough and then get them under the fences. Uh, and interestingly, after doing some telemetry, uh, uh, gathering data information uh, from those pronghorn, we found that the one or two that got collared, uh, they were, what they're doing is living down in parks uh, in that area down there, those homes and, and, uh, area down there in parks. Uh, and then they just kind of take their time getting up through all the ponderosa pines. Uh, they'd go across the forest service roads, through all the pasture fences for cattle and, and so on and so forth and come on up there. Hang out on the seal bar in the winter time for just a little bit, turn around and kind of go back. So that was really interesting, that the, the, the topography and the, and the obstacles and everything that they were going through. They just kind of just had that routine. Uh, meanwhile, a bunch of the other data that we had, uh, that was being shown through the telemetry was actually just pronghorn that were staying in the same area year round. Uh, so it was like, wow, okay, so these guys over here like to go from the north to the south and south to the north. These guys just make big circles, uh, in and around these areas. So anyhow, we created, uh, at Babbitts, what we call goat bars. Uh, now, what's interesting about goat bars is that we found that for the mic, for access, you know, migrations is a tough word for, for a lot of these pronghorn, but certainly access, uh, for these animals to, to go around areas. Fence lines was, was the big issue. Babbitts made a huge investment into modifying nearly all their fence lines across Babbitt Ranches uh, in the cataract and the SP, uh, with these PVC pipes. And we put them on the bottom wire of these fence lines, uh, and pulled it up a little bit. Given that pronghorn, uh, does the access, uh, and it was a, a great effort, uh, and, uh, interestingly, it ended up spreading all the way to, uh, west Texas, all the way up into Canada, uh, and all the way, uh, around and through Montana, other places, all started here at Babbitt Ranches, uh, with our efforts to minimize impact on pronghorn. Uh, so another thing that is real interesting here as well is since, uh, nineteen, uh, ninety-one or so, uh, we've been very proactive about, uh, making the corridors uh, in open spaces through the pinion juniper trees, uh, out in that area. We've cleared about forty-two thousand acres of pinion and juniper trees out in that area. So a lot of the telemetry data that you're receiving now, although somebody might think it's, um, historical kind of type things, well, I assure you that after clearing forty-two thousand acres of pinion, uh, and juniper trees, uh, that area is a very different landscape than it was a number of years ago. Uh, these were all in concert, uh, with each, together, uh, you know, access on the highways. We did it also at, uh, Wapackee, where we took our fence lines down, uh, north of Wapackee, uh, and then another location north of Spiderweb. Uh, and been very, very, very proactive when it comes to, uh, anything that has anything to do with pronghorn. And with that, two things that are very interesting as well is that over the last thirty years or whatever number of years, Arizona Game and Fish comes to our board meetings, goes over the pronghorn, goes over the data. Uh, and, uh, our employees carry with them books that they have written down over the years, where they see pronghorn, where we don't, any other observations they have. We've, I've participated in the capturing of pronghorn. Uh, I, uh, have participated in, uh, you know, aerial, uh, assessments for, uh, counting of wildlife, uh, pronghorn. A very, very deep cultural, very meaningful part of Babbitt Ranches. The very first day that I met, uh, Clinera, I told them right away, pronghorn will be the number one thing that we address as we move forward with this. A couple of years ago, meeting with Scott Poffenberger, the supervisor there is in the game fish department, it was proposed immediately that those corridors could be up to half a mile. And what is also interesting about that is, is that when we do the, the gaps in between the open spaces from our clearing opinion and juniper trees, we look at somewhere at a minimum, it'll be about seventy-five yards. Uh, that is a small, on the small side, but we've made corridors at seventy-five yards. Uh, but generally, we don't go much more over two hundred yards to get the pronghorn, uh, you, you know, uh, from one open area to another. So I know that that six hundred foot, uh, for example, and so on and so forth, they're going to go follow that if they have that path. Uh, also, I might mention to you that, uh, in our efforts associated with pronghorn, uh, not only has our, our commitment to the Arizona Game and Fish and the personnel been extremely, uh, rich and meaningful uh, and very committed, but one of our employees was retired, uh, wildlife, uh, biologist for the Arizona Game and Fish. He was our full-time employee, uh, doing these, uh, managing the pinion and juniper trees for, uh, these corridors and gaps between the, the trees and, and, and all of us visiting about how wide do they need to be and what areas are we going to do? I mean, you know, you want to talk about a company that's committed to this, this effort, uh, you actually had a, a, a full-time employee here doing the work that had just retired from the Arizona Game and Fish. So anyhow, that's just a little bit of the history on this. Uh, and as far as the future, I, I'd like to just tell you that when it comes to the future, uh, along with Clinera, the obligation to pronghorn is extraordinary. Uh, they've already, uh, funding opportunities. There's all a six-year, uh, collaring project that'll begin this fall where there, I think it's fifty, uh, pronghorn, maybe fifty mule deer, I, I may be off on my numbers, but something along those lines. It will be for a three-year period of time, uh, to gather information pre-construction, so to speak. Uh, then there'll be another set of collars that go out three years from now, so that they can learn from the decisions we're making today and how maybe, and how we can modify or adjust to do even better. And, um, and along with all this, uh, you know, we have over a hundred miles of pipeline out there. So, I mean, we take it for granted, all these corridors, but a whole bunch of them have to do with where the waters are located, uh, and so on and so forth. So, uh, you know, modifying where waters are located, uh, in the future, I mean, these are, these are commitments. The, 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 these are, this is what the abbess is wanting to hand off to the next generation, uh, along with the county and, and, and everybody involved with the game department. Uh, and so, uh, please be assured, uh, all of you, I mean, I appreciate that, I appreciate all, all and any, uh, thoughts that you, y'all are having. But our conversations over the last thirty years in our boardroom with these folks that, that, that own Babbitt Ranches, I can tell you, you, you have to appreciate, there isn't a comment that's been made tonight that hasn't been brought up over the years. And we've absolutely, uh, thoroughly, uh, visited about them, uh, feel very comfortable with them. Uh, excited in some ways, because we're going to get to learn so much. Uh, and, uh, anyway, uh, so I guess that's what I'd have to say.
Um, thank you, Mr. Cordasco. This is Chair Ontiveris. And while we're on this subject, the, the map that we are all seeing on our screen right now was the topic of great conversation at the study session. I, I remember it well, because it was of great concern to myself. On June first, three commissioners, myself, uh, Commissioner Burton and Commissioner Ruggles actually went on a site visit. Um, Commissioner Burton and I rode with Mr. Cordasco and with Mr. Fitzgerald. And, um, uh, following was Commissioner Ruggles in another vehicle. I actually asked Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Cordasco, because, because this was a topic of concern at the study session. I actually asked them, Mr. Cordasco, to drive us to this area, to this site, to look where this was at. And he did, and we went and we turned around. We all saw it, the, the other two commissioners I'm talking about saw this. And there is a difference at looking for something, I, I don't know if you would call this a desktop review that we are looking at right now. But there is a difference between this desktop review and what I saw on the site visit. And so I am very interested to, to hear what, um, Commissioner Ruggles' take was on it and what Commissioner Burton's take on it is. Um, because my concern that I had at the study session regarding this very topic was somewhat alleviated when I was actually on site. And so while we're on this, I want to ask, um, Commissioner Ruggles, your thoughts on, on this, on section twenty-three, that one particular section that is showing a complete blockage for the pronghorn. And then after following Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Burton, I would like you to give your, um, take on what you saw that day.
Are you, uh, ready for a comment or two here? Commissioner, uh, Chair Ontiveros, uh,
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ruggles, it's me, and it's, I'm muted, I'm muting challenge. But anyway, what I would like you to do is I would like you to give a, a, a brief, this is what I see on the screen in front of me. But this is what I saw when I was on the site visit. And then following that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Burton for her take on that very subject. So please proceed, Mr. Ruggles.
Now, very good. Um, my observations are based on two things.
My visual observations and also conversation with Bill Cordasco, which you have heard what I heard from him and perhaps what I heard in a little more detail. But nevertheless, that particular area around twenty three is much more open than you might think. Looking at the map. I've taken a lot of, taken in a lot of backcountry in Arizona. And maps such as we're looking at can be a bit deceptive in that they don't necessarily agree with onsite observations of the terrain and the vegetation that you have on that terrain. And in looking at it when we were out there, I found it to be a great deal more open, especially around the east and north sides of it. Then the, well, what we're presented with on the screen here would tend to indicate it is a little more forested around to the west, which, you know, the pronghorn aren't going to like a great deal. They like being out in the open. But the rest of it is far more open than what you would expect from looking at the aerial survey map here. Keep in mind that a great deal of that vegetation is very, very low vegetation. And that was, that was what I observed. So I think that's probably enough to add right at this point.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, for your visual take on that. Commissioner Burton, I would like you to give the, present what you saw that day on the site visit as compared to the map that we're looking at in front of us.
Yeah, um, one of the things that was discussed while we were driving to these areas is how much reduction in vegetation they've done to open up some of the areas. And it is definitely easy to see that. And I think even, I feel like the area that John was feeling like the area to the west was more open, and it was. I feel like the area to the east is more open than it's being represented because they have gone in and done some thinning in the area, so it's not quite as dense and there is room to move around in that space. So I, my concerns really were alleviated by being there in person and seeing the scope and seeing the environment. So I personally think that the pronghorn will adapt and they will find their way around. I don't believe that they're going to come to just a wall in the road, so to speak. But they will be able to maneuver their way around if they choose to go that way. And I wouldn't be at all surprised as after they do it a couple of times, they say, hey, it's not worth it. Let's just go around the other way. But I mean, there's, it's so hard to say what they're going to do, but I I really do think there is room in the vegetation for them to maneuver around and not feel like they're claustrophobic. That's, that's my take on it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner Burton, and I I will just add that because at the study session, we we hit on this topic quite a bit. I mean, we really nailed it. And honestly, I had a preconceived judgment. I was a no way, no way. Um, is this, am I comfortable with this? Until I got there and I saw what it was, I again, I want to stress that I asked Mr. Cordasco to drive us to this exact point. Mr. Fitzgerald had his, I I don't know really what it is. It was on his cell phone, but it mapped it. He pulled it up. We went to this exact spot. It wasn't like, well, maybe it's somewhere over there. I mean, we went, we saw, we looked, and it does look different on the ground than it does on this map. And when I was done with the site visit, I had a different take on it. The site visit was very, was a very valuable thing. That I'm going to leave it at that. I do, while we are question, while we're doing questions here, I do see Vice Chair Walters' hand raised and I do see Commissioner Best hand raised. Vice Chair Walters, please go first and then follow Commissioner Best follow that.
Here on Tavarez and and Commissioners, thank you for for that insightful visit that you did onsite. I apologize for not being able to make that. That is very helpful and and I do recognize and I want everybody else to recognize that the Babbit Ranches have been world-class land managers as far as the wildlife goes. And and to have Mr. Cordasco come up and 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 speak to us on on this, it it helps to answer the questions that I had. I I was not there. I have not seen it on the ground. I don't know if that's what's shown on these maps is is sagebrush or or juniper trees. But to have the assurance from Mr. Cordasco that these animals will not be impacted is good enough per me. And 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 with that, I'll leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I I just want to add this because I think that it is relevant and I don't want it to get away because at the point in time. I also expressed to Mr. Cordasco, Vice Chair, you, I believe, have summed up the feelings and comments of probably this commission and probably perhaps all of Northern Arizona in the respect that Mr. Cordasco has in his reputation for managing his lands. And I specifically said, you have this respect, but what happens if something happens to you? And I was given a wealth of information from him. The Babbits have a very, very good succession plan, written, by the way. And I'm going to sum it up just to say that, God forbid, something happened to this Mr. Cordasco today. The management and the values that are going to be adhered to by this Babbit family are far deeper than Mr. Cordasco. And so I had, that gave me a real good, a real good feeling knowing that as well. So, Mr. Commissioner Best, would you please go ahead?
I totally agree. It wanted to. This has been an amazing process for me. I wanted to say this at some point, but I guess I'll say it now. You know, we worked on this renewable energy ordinance for two years and I think it's a really good ordinance. I think it balances the values basically of development and ecology as well as can be done. And then to have this project show up in a place where we trust the people because they've been at conservation on the Babbit Ranches for really more than decades, generations. And we know they're going to try to do the right thing. It's a real sweet spot. And and I'm just really happy to be part of it. Having said that, I have brought up on Google Maps, which Bob Short, you could do in about four minutes. That's how long it took me. This real estate that we're talking about. On this map, you see that little, does it say one hundred to the off the southwest corner of section twenty three? That appears to be the top of a little mountain. And the red area on the west goes around that mountain. And the blocked area blocked by twenty three is a very narrow corridor between two. Clicking back and forth on Google Maps between two D and three D between two small mountains and right between them, there's an open corridor. I can't tell you how wide it is, but it's pretty narrow. It drains down into when this picture was taken, a little ephemeral wet spot. And that section is right smack in the middle of that narrow corridor. And so if it's blocked, we're going to ask the pronghorn to go into pretty heavy cover of a mountain. And it just doesn't make, it just doesn't pass the common sense test. You're getting right close to it right there. There's the mountain, okay, right, right, come down right there. Why don't you put your cursor right on the top of the mountain? Right there. That corridor is about an inch to the right of the top of the mountain. So they're coming around to the left, to the west of that mountain. And you can kind of, you can kind of see what's going on here on the screen too.
Can you pull that back up, Mr. Short?
You know, I I really feel like I'm not impugning anyone's integrity. I am going on the information that we've been given. And you can see that little corridor going through twenty three on both these maps. Bob, can you put your cursor right above, you see where the wet area is? The light brown right there, yeah. And that little corridor is what is where that wildlife corridor goes exactly right there. And that is being a hundred percent blocked. So they would be pushed into this raised area to the east and west of that corridor, which is pretty heavily populated with trees. That doesn't pass the common.
So this is it right here. What you're saying is that I was seeing this corridor through here.
Exactly. And that is.
Going around this way and I, you know, I did kind of notice that on the map. So this is it. That's the double top, double top right here, I believe.
And everywhere that's bright red on the map you see is open is this gray area. They're going around these mountains. And they're going down through this little corridor. And if you ask, if you block that corridor, you're asking them to something, to do something that they're not doing anywhere up on the map, which is climb up through the trees.
And I'm not sure, Mr. Cordasco is talking about some clearing out here, so this may have been clear of trees as well. I don't really know.
Not, you know, Google Maps is usually a couple of years old. And it, and I'm not, I'm not sure about the elevation change, how sensitive the animals are to that.
Yeah, we did check the, we did check the elevation changes. It's a lot less than you would think. I think there's an average across double top of like four percent slope. It got a course higher at the top. But Google Maps can be actually really old. I think they're like, I've seen some lately, they're ten years old at least.
Mr. Short, please leave that map up. And and I will say that when we were there, it it looks on this map, it looks like a mountain, but it looked more like a rolling hill to me. But I do want you to leave that map up and I want Mr. Cordasco to please address the commission on on Commissioner Best's comments.
Okay, well, thank you. And so, yes, I think that that's a little deceiving as far as being a hill there. And also, I think that what is really important is how much more clearing is going to happen out in this country in opening up even more more of that landscape through there. I I would like if it's okay, Chairman, Chairperson, if Larry Phoenix of the Arizona Game and Fish Department is online and if you would just divert these questions to him, I think now you would have actually the person who I've followed around all these last thirty years for his Arizona Game and Fish Department credibility and 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 knowledge.
Yes, I think that that would be a very good idea at this time. Mr. Phoenix, if you would please state your name and address. I don't know how much of the questions you have heard about the concern with section twenty three blocking what looks to be blocking an entire pronghorn corridor. If you could please address and bring clarification to this issue, I would very much appreciate it.
Yes, I can. I hope that you can hear me. My name is Larry Phoenix. I am the regional supervisor for the Flagstaff Office. Our address is three five zero zero Lake Mary Road, Flagstaff, Arizona. And I just got on to the meeting. And so I did not hear your original questions, but I did hear what you just asked. Not exactly sure based on the map where that section is, but I have seen and been very, and I am very familiar with the corridor maps that we have produced through our caller research projects that we've been working with Babbit Ranches on for over twenty five years. And yes, the sum of the project is projected to be over some of the travel corridors that we have outlined during our research projects. I believe that the sections more to the west are part of the latter portions of the Clonera project. There's a, the project's broken up into three timeframes and the most the project or the section that covers the largest travel corridor is in their third phase. That's the word I'm looking for. All of that said, we've been working really closely with Jessica Simmons with the county, Billy Cordasco with Babbit Ranches, and then Clonera. And we are a little bit excited about this project, even though the project itself looks like it's going to cover what we see as our historical, one of our historical travel corridors. The reason is that we have twenty five years of information based on previous coloring operations that we've done or coloring projects in this area. And we have zero biological information when it comes to solar projects in mule deer and pronghorn habitat. There's a lot of country in this area that is open and where we know that pronghorn and the mule deer use. And because of our coordination with both Babbit Ranches and Clonera itself, we've been able to work with them. We have a large coloring project online for us to go out and color pronghorn and mule deer in October if this project was to move forward. And the information that we're going to gain through their first phase of how the pronghorn are going to react to the the construction. The fencing is our most biggest concern because that's what's going to block the the their movements. Not so much the solar panels, but it's going to be the fencing and how that's going to affect. And in working with both Babbit and Clonera, our expectations is we'll be able to work with them to adjust things moving forward to mitigate the the bulk of the impact from where their project is projected to be on top of travel corridors. The other important aspect of this is that across the country, there is very little biological data when it comes to solar fields like this. So we are in a very unique situation here and we find that working with them, this is going to be very helpful for us. Coconino County, Arizona as a state and for all practical persons, the rest of the country when it comes to renewable natural energy, specifically solar fields and how it's affecting larger big-name animals such as the pronghorn and the mule deer.
Okay, Mr. Phoenix, what I'm going to do, can you, can you see the screen that the rest of us are looking at?
I can see the, I can see the, what I'm calling a Google Earth photo, yes.
Okay, now, what I want you to do is, Mr. Short, would you please bring up the migratory map? Okay, now, Mr. Phoenix, look at, okay, thank you. See what Mr. Short is highlighting right there, that green block?
Yes.
Okay, that is the exact corridor that Commissioners, that that is the one where concern has been expressed, saying it's going to be cut off completely. And then you saw the Google map, the Google Earth map, showing the terrain there. So speak to Commissioner Best's comments, please, that, hey, it all, you know, it sounds. it all, you know, it sounds good, but I'm still not convinced that this is not going to be absolutely shut off.
Yeah, and, and I can't answer to the question of how it's going to impact the pronghorn or the mule deer in that one section. Um, if it is fenced as shown and from, because we don't have any biological information, then, um, you know, there is a possibility that it would cut that one corridor off. Um, if you were to, if you could pull the map back up, that showed the corridors?
Okay, Mr. Short, could you, there you go.
He got it. And so from our perspective, we look at this as, uh, the totality of circumstances. And there's no doubt based on this map in the lack of information we have, that when you look at that section and where that specific solar field will be, it looks like it will impact or one hundred percent block that corridor. There is no doubt that we've, we've had this conversation amongst ourselves with the game and fish department. We've also had this conversation um, with Jessica and Billy Cordasco with Babbitt Ranches and with Clonera. Now, that said, we also know based on our, uh, research that the, both the pronghorn and the mule deer are also using other corridors um, as outlined in the oranges color and the red color that sweeps to the west of that section. Um, and so that is by looking at that and our best estimate, our professional opinion based on our biological experience, we do not believe that that one section is going to be a large concern over the grand scheme or the totality of circumstances within this entire project. Um, that said, um, we're hoping to learn a lot of things as we move forward with our coloring project that we have planned. And we may learn, as an example, when it was first proposed, they were looking at quarter mile gaps between the corners of the sections. And we've talked to them about a half a mile, but we truly don't know. We believe as we look at it with the lack of biological data, that it's better to have more, but we don't know exactly. And so that's part of the information that we're going to gain, um, moving forward. But to answer, specifically answer the question, when you look at the map, it's, uh, and a person would look at that with, you know, the common sense, the way the topography is, that is a, a lower area. It is um, a hill on each side. That's what, and it is open. Um, in the middle where the red is, that's why the pronghorn and mule deer use that corridor. And so that section certainly has the potential of impacting um, the, the specific pronghorn that moved through that corridor. But again, looking at the totality of the project in the other larger movement corridors, we do not think it's going to hamper the population, um, as we move forward.
Okay, well, and I understand what you're saying, but to, to drill down on the specific point that both Vice Chair Walters and Commissioner Best made, which is you have a pronghorn coming, say, from the north, okay? And they're coming along there. And when they hit that area, what are they going to do?
When they hit the fence, our best, when our best estimate is that they're, they are going to hit the fence, they're obviously not going to be able to continue south. And they have, you know, it's, I, I can't speak for what a pronghorn is thinking. Alls I can speak for is what our professional opinion is based on our, you know, biological experience and our management experience is that in most cases, they're going to utilize the surrounding terrain to navigate around that obstacle. Um, whether or not they travel through the trees to go around it, or they go all the way around to the west to that larger red area. Um, you know, your guess, quite frankly, is, is, is good as ours. When it comes to that, I can tell you that what we've seen in the last ten years with the pronghorn in Arizona um, is that they have a tendency to be using more and more thicker terrain, being that we are seeing more and more pronghorn in the prong, excuse me, in the ponderosa pine types. Um, and in the thicker areas of the pinion juniper, whether that's a nature of, of the lack of fire and the lack of clearing or just something that they, they're, we're seeing them use more. So as an example, we see way more pronghorn in the ponderosa pine type as you get closer to two C on, we see the exact same thing in the areas south of Flagstaff. So to, to specifically answer your question, you know, our guess is as good as yours. And when you look at it, it's going to be an obstruction for them. But at the same time, based on what we've seen, is that I believe they are going to um, find an alternate route to go around and to get from north to south and south to north.
Okay, I've got another question. Uh, Mr. Short, please pull up the Google Earth map. Okay. Now, can you see that dark brown area that Mr. The Commissioner Best was referring to? Can you, can you highlight that, Mr. Short, please? Okay, see that? Is that a wet area that is, um, really important to the pronghorn population?
It is.
That's where, do you think that's why they're using this corridor? Is to get to that specific point for that specific reason?
Uh, no, my professional opinion is they're not using it because of that location. If you go back to the Google Earth photo and highlight that section again, what they're, the reason they're using, using that corridor is the, the, uh, the lighter brown area that goes from north to south and south to north because it's open. Pronghorn are a range animal that prefers more open country. And that lower area there, there's a darker brown, darker brown, because there's less vegetation there because it does hold water. But it's not the water that is attracting them to that point. Um, that is just happens to be where the corridor leads.
Okay, okay. Um, Commissioner Bass, your hand is raised. Please go ahead.
Uh, I'm kind of in the same place I was. Okay, I wonder if we could get a commitment uh, to clear some junipers around that. Um, I, it, it's not so much coming down from the north because the dead end coming down from the north is fairly short. And so they could go back up to the north and around to the west of the mountain. But coming up from the south, we have a bright red area that goes a long way up. And we have a narrow corridor getting out of that bright red area. And now that corridor is blocked. So maybe if we did some, I mean, if it's really important that this section has to be used right there for some reason, maybe if we did some juniper thinning to the west and made sure we had a quarter of a mile space between twenty-three and the one to the southwest of it. Uh, I, I can't, uh, I don't have elevations on Google Maps. I'm not on Google Earth Pro, but don't know how much the elevation changes, but that that would pass the common sense test if we gave them an open space to pass through. But right now, we're giving them, uh, elevation. And as the gentleman pointed out, they're an open range animal. They're not going to be comfortable in the woods. That's why Babett Ranches has cleared forty-eight thousand acres of juniper. So is there a way that we can mitigate? If we have to use this twenty-three, is there a way that we can mitigate the wildlife quarter that we, that we are eliminating?
Mr. Phoenix, can you speak to that?
And it, so we certainly could work with Clonera and, and Babett Ranches to clear an area that would allow them to go around that fence line. I mean, we, we've worked with Babbitts to do a lot of clearing projects like that. Topography wise, there is a hill on both sides. Um, unfortunately, I'm not in a position to answer the question about whether or not that section truly has to be used. That would be a question that maybe Clonera has already answered prior to me getting on. Um, but it's a large project and in the end, maybe that's the simpler move is to not put the, that there. I, but that's up to them. Um, but we certainly can work within, with them to, uh, do habitat manipulation, removing of pinion juniper trees to open up some area. You'll see that there's a red section that's just to the, on the eastern edge of that, uh, a red area that's on the eastern edge of that section that leads up and stops. Um, and so there's places where we could tie into that they have used pretty regularly to work them around that section um, in the future.
Oh, Madam Chair, could I bring up a map here and show something?
Uh, yes, please. If you feel it's relevant to this topic, it would be useful.
Okay, so this is our parcel viewer. And it, it shows the parcels very well. It shows this corridor very well. And if you'd look at this, if you get close, you can tell that this is where the antelope are going. And if you go over and if you measure, and let me see if I can move something so I can measure appropriately in feet. Uh, if you go from the trees to the trees, it's only about three hundred feet right there. It widens out here to about three seventy-five. That's really the area that, I mean, I'm not a wildlife expert. There would appear this is where the antelope are going. So, um, and I don't know the issues involved with this, but possibly a corridor just through that area would be something that Clonera, I'd, I'd like Clonera to speak about this because I really don't know, but it does look like that is where they're going in this, and that's exactly when that corridor is there.
Okay, you know what? At this point in time, Mr. Fitzgerald, uh, would you please speak to that?
Uh, certainly, Chairwoman, just quickly before I speak to that, I think Billy Ricardasco would like to make a few additional comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so I wanted to back up on what Larry, uh, Phoenix was talking about. Section twenty-four is, uh, all open and, uh, largely open. We would break right on the corner of twenty-three and, and twenty-four, uh, and twenty-seven. All we have to do is it's not even that much of a deal there. Like Larry was saying, you just break right through that corner there and you go right into section twenty-four and it completely opens it all up. You know, and, and I appreciate Larry saying, well, you know, it's hard to give a lot of confidence what a pronghorn is going to do, but pretty sure if we open that up, they're going to use it. I would like to suggest that right now, there has been so much thought on this pronghorn uh, in, in this area. I mean, you all have to greatly appreciate it. As Larry said, twenty-five, thirty years, we've been doing this. This is deeply rooted in what we, we've been doing. And, and, and we've got the collars but getting potentially put on in October. And this is providing an opportunity to really learn from what we've put together here so that then we can make those adjustments. So it would be easy to go right now and say, hey, let's just break open that corridor. And, and okay, maybe that's what we do. Talk to Larry and talk to some of these folks, say, well, let's just break it open and do it. Wouldn't take. Looking at it on this map from where I see where we've cleaned all the trees out already, it wouldn't be hardly a couple of days at the most to do that. Or you say, hey, you know what? Let's just see what these pronghorn do. That's the purpose of doing the research that Larry was talking about, uh, you know, for the next couple of years because what, what I think he was also insinuating is after the three years of this study, then another set of collars go out so that after the adjustments, and then we see how we did with these modifications. This is important for learning uh, and, and, and understanding. And for the Arizona Game and Fish Department, this is an extraordinary opportunity for them to, at a national level, be able to, you know, to talk about what they're doing here and share the information. So I, 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 I can tell you right now, if somebody said, hey, bust a, bust a corridor into section twenty-four, I'd say, okay. And it would take you just as Larry was saying, right up to that other red section. Um, it ties them all together. That's what we've been doing all these years when we cleaned out, uh, these trees. We just look, okay, where do we want to break another corridor to? So what you're kind of suggesting, right? We've been doing that for a lot of years. Uh, and anyway, so I have a lot of confidence that that pronghorn is going to bounce up on that section there and we can make a corridor and take it either to the west or the east without a problem.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cordasco. Mr. Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised.
I will lower it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, all right.
No, I, I will, I will raise it. Um, is that then, I'm, I'm a little unsure what that meant. So we're gonna take some trees out across fourteen and then they can go down in twenty-four and go and go down past twenty-five? Mr. Cordasco, is that what you're saying?
It is. And anyway, you can see on your map right there, as Larry was talking about earlier, where the lighter brown is like in section twenty-four, that's all open. And all you have is right on the corner, like, you know, the four corners of Arizona right there, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six and twenty-five. It's just a little gap right there. We just haven't got to that. We just didn't, you know, over time, we're just learning and talking it up with, with everybody at the game department, everything. We, we just didn't get to it. But if you just open that corner up right there, it's fourteen hundred and thirty feet, uh, which is quite a distance, right? Compared to the one that, uh, Bob Short measured over there in twenty-three. And they bust into twenty-four, they're linked in with all the other corridors without it, without, with that, without it being a problem. It's just, when do you want to do that? You want Larry to go and see, okay, we did this? And then, and then learn from it and then open it up? Or do you want to open it up as part of this project right now?
Well, I think the, the, uh, so you're talking about removing trees when you say open it up?
Correct. Yes, you just widen that up and, and they'll go there.
That would make me comfortable if we just did it.
Super. We've, we've got three giant grinders out about us right now.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I would be comfortable with that if, if, uh, if Game and Fish is comfortable with it and Babett Ranches and we'll just, we'll hope that the, uh, the pronghorn are as well.
Okay, all right. This is Chair Antivarius again, and we're going, we, I think that we've gained a wealth of information from the question and answer session that we've had on this very topic. On so Mr. Short, are you, would you like to continue on?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Are you complete?
Uh, if you have any more questions, obviously it's gone, questions have gone to everyone. So if you have any more questions for anyone else, you can continue with that.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time. So, Mr. Short, do you have anything left in it that you would like to involve in your presentation before I, uh, call on the applicant or the applicant's representative?
Madam Chair, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, so um, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address um, the commission at this time. I think that you have already done an excellent job of addressing us. But now is your time. And I would also like to ask if you guys have read the staff report and seen the conditions? And if you agree with them, and if you could please speak to that. So state your name and address. Uh, once again, for the record, and go ahead and address the commission.
Thank you very much again. This is Tom Fitzgerald, the Director of Development at Clonera. My address is thirty-four Rustic Terrace in Blue River, Colorado, eight zero four two four. Um, I think I will keep my comments brief because fortunately we have had a, uh, several opportunities to have discourse and dialogue about this project with uh, not only the commissioners in this panel, but also the staff members at Coconino County and multiple other stakeholders who have participated, provided comments and has helped shape and form the direction that this project is going. Uh, I guess I, I would like to say first and foremost, thank you for all of the thoughtful input and dialogue of all of those different stakeholders. I think in a lot of ways, it has only made this project better as we strive to achieve a triple bottom line with these renewable energy developments. Um, to your, your question about the staff report, we have had a chance to review the staff report and concur with all of the findings within the staff report, including the conditions. Uh, with the exception of condition number four, which pertains to undergrounding uh, the collector line systems. We had asked that that be revised to allow us to put the collector systems on pole lines to bring the power into the centrally located substation. Uh, but aside from that, uh, we are in full agreement with the staff report and, and, and look forward to bringing this project to fruition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Um, I will just ask, Mr. Cordasco, do you have any comments that you would like to make to the commission at this time?
Yes.
I, I guess I should say further comments that you would like to make to the commission at this time before we move, um, to questions. I I guess I should say further comments that you would like to make to the commission at this time before we move, um, to questions.
Yeah, I think, um, thank you very, very much for that opportunity. Um, because, um. First off, I'd just like to say that on behalf of Babbitts with the Coconino County. Um. Gee, we're all in this together. Um, and it makes that makes this project even more meaningful. Um, and, um, certainly, I can't tell you enough about the Arizona Game and Fish Department. And that relationship that we've had for a very long time and what that means to us as well. Um, this was conveyed to Clinera on the very first day that I met him. Um, and we established the Western CO Bar Legacy Conservation Community about three weeks ago. It includes everybody that's associated with this project. The Golden Eagles with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. It includes Arizona Trail for all the recreation side. Uh, it includes research and a lot of other things, all on the western side of the CO Bar. It's going to be designated as the Western CO Bar Legacy Conservation Area. In that, we're going to be taking everything that we can and with all your assistance and and input from the game department and and all the others. Uh, and make it an inclusive effort for the next generation. This is very, very rich and meaningful, and it's well thought out and considered, and has a lot of depth. With that being said, I really would like to just mention to you about Clinera. So after the designation of the Western CO Bar Legacy Conservation. Area and bringing everybody together, they have committed a substantial amount of funds to the Landsward Foundation. For the duration of this project for thirty-five years. The research, the science, the commitment to conservation to this area is just starting. Uh, and we all get to be a part of that. So, thank you, and, um. If there's no questions, I guess that would be it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cordasco. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to ask if there are any commissioners. That have any questions at this time for either Mr. Fitzgerald or Mr. Cordasco. Commissioner Best, I do see your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um. I am interested in, um. Basically, and I'm, you know, I'm going to be commenting on this a lot. Basically, the ecology of what we're trying to do. Uh, we are. Putting really an industrial development on twelve thousand acres. Of land in Coconino County. And the long-term goal of the applicant and and the county. As stated, is that at some point, this may all go away at the end of the project in thirty-five years and. There will be an intact. Vegetation and animal system out there as there is today, and cows will just go back to grazing there. And, uh. That's a great vision. But challenging. Usually when there are industrial installations, the land suffers greatly. And so that's really why we're here. That's why I'm here tonight, anyway. So my question, my basic question is this, uh, that the, um. Solar panels come down to within two feet of the ground. Uh, and under that, we're going to leave the vegetation. And of course, we're going to have to take out the trees, and there may be some larger bushes that have to come out. There's been talk of mowing. Uh, we are going to be having a different conversation. A little later on about whether, uh, the. Electrical lines are going to be buried or go overhead. But, uh, when I was talking to Mr. Short, he said that possibly some would electricalize lines would be laid on the ground, I assume in conduit. Um. So my question is. We've got natural vegetation under these units. Um. We know that we can't have much in the way of fire fuels under them because I'm sure this is, you know, I think these are. Millions of dollars in. Square mile. Uh, many millions. Uh, we definitely are not going to have a fire spreading through. So how are we going to control the vegetation? Under the modules in a way that protects the modules. Leaves, uh, the grass intact. And prevents wildfire danger.
Thank you, Commissioner Best, for the the thoughtful comments and question. Uh, I think maybe just a few things that I'd like to correct first, and then I'd probably like to call on one of my colleagues, Mike Gallego, to actually speak about the. O and M and vegetation management. Uh, of the plant. Uh, one of one of the first things I will say is that none of the cabling will be laid on the ground. Uh, it will either be strong along the bottom of the tracker arrays in a bundle that is cabled and and secured to the tracker device itself. Or it will be laid in conduits in the ground. Um, what what specifically we were looking for to add as an overheim line would be what we would just. Describe as what we call our medium voltage collector system. Which is taking the. Power from each one of these arrays and transporting it to the point of interconnection, which will be located on section twenty-one and the central part of the project. Uh, to bury that number of conductors would be cost prohibitive for this project and make it non-viable. Um, essentially, what we're envisioning is probably one or two pole lines that all of these conductors would be carried on. And directed to that central location on twenty-one. So we would minimize the poles. Uh, as a matter of cost, certainly, uh, but also for, uh, point of aesthetics. Um, Mike Gallego, I don't know if if you're on, if you're able to speak to, uh. Commissioner Best's, uh, other questions about vegetation management, but if you are, I'd like to turn the, uh, microphone over to you now.
And Mr. Gallego, if this is Chair Ontiveris, if you would, please state your name and address for the record, please, and then go ahead with your comments.
Uh, certainly. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good to go.
All right. My name is Michael Gallego. Um. Residence one eight seven zero six east. Or west Flintlock Drive, Queen Creek, Arizona, eight three seven. Uh, or excuse me, eight nine eight five one four two. Lot of. Lot of different numbers there. Um, I'm the Vice President of Operations for for Clean Era. Um, I've been with the company since since the company was started, um, and have been involved with and responsible for every project that we've built to date. Um, we have, um. A a a lot of different projects throughout the U.S. that we operate, and every project is unique in the way. That we manage the habitat. And sometimes, sometimes that requires, uh, mechanical methods of. Of controlling, um, growth on site. And other times we use, you know, more more natural methods. And so. In in a project like this, where we are not, um, necessarily dealing. With, um, heavy, heavy rainfall and very large, um. Uh, growth type species of of grasses and so forth on site. We typically. Um, reseed with native grasses, native native type of. Of, uh, of grasses and seeds that will. That will germinate and grow to a certain height then, and. The way we typically manage on a site like this is by. One, using, you know, using the wildlife that will graze in the open spaces in between these facilities. But also, um, the use of of livestock at times. Um, typically, we don't use, um, we don't use cattle. Or goats inside our facilities, but throughout the U.S. and various locations, we do use sheep. And sheep are typically brought in by herders. They're they're put inside the facility, which is fenced. They're controlled inside the facility through the use of, um, electric fence wires and otherwise in order to graze certain areas and move them through the facility. Um. You know, in order to, you know, to better manage their, um, their. Their eating and 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 so far, the way that they, the way that they work through the site. Um. Sheep do a couple of things. They, they're. They're pretty good about, um, eating down the the things that that typically grow and and dry and. And become fire hazards or maybe cause shading to the to the solar facility. But they also, um, replenish, um, replenish the the soils and they help. Um, pack down the soils and and put nutrients back in the soil so that the. The the growth the following year can 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 regenerate and and basically do the same thing. Um, our our typical, the the things that we grow inside of the solar facilities are not. Um, going to be high growth type of things. We have. Out there, um, a lot of native grasses and, um, and sage and other things. We don't, we don't. Tend to try to rip that stuff out. We're not. We're not going to go in and. And or I should say, we don't want to go in and do mass grading. That's not, that's not how we treat these kind of facilities. We use technology that contours to the land. And and minimizes the impact to the existing top soils. So the the biggest impact to top soils is where we have access roads. But in in this kind of. In this kind of environment with this kind of, um. Soil conditions, we we use native compactive roads for. For roads inside our facilities, and we don't typically bring in any additional aggregate. Um, unless we need it. Um, if aggregate is needed, it's typically at entrances. In it areas that, um, we particularly use as main arterial roads for. Um, safety and and access for any kind of, um, first responders and so forth. So, uh, that's kind of a general overview of of how we manage these sites and and one that I would. Uh, a method that we would probably use on this one. And if you have any questions, I'm open for those questions at this time.
Well, let me say that, um, after working on the renewable energy ordinance. For two years and learning about agrivoltex, which is a word. And seeing, uh, pictures of sheep, but hearing mostly that that'll never happen in northern Arizona. I'm very pleased with your answer and, uh. I think that takes us a long way. Um. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Let me ask Mr. Sh- Mr. Short, um. Would we like to talk about electrical lines now? With the applicant? Because you and I have talked and, uh. A little bit and, um. I I concur. As I said, my my biggest focus here is on the ecology of the land. Uh, we also have to worry about view sheds. We have to worry about cost. We have to worry about landforms, you know, we don't want to be grading hills. Um. For all of those reasons, uh, well, for a couple of those reasons, I think the idea of overhead electrical lines is a good one. The, obviously, the major challenge is the visual impact. But I think, uh, I don't know how tall these things are, but I think talking to Mr. Short, it sounds like. Um. We're not going to have a an issue, uh, from our. Key observation points. Uh, with these lines, we're far enough on one eighty and houses. And I think Red Mountain would just be too far away to make a difference. Uh, so, Mr. Short, do you concur with that?
Mr. Best, uh, certainly. See, if you can see here, this is the closest electric line. And it's about two miles from one eighty, so I don't think it would be visible. I did have a question about how tall it would be. But I didn't expect it'd be tall enough to be, uh, to be visible. Um, so these are, you know, you can see all the red ones on here. Those are all the ones. That the applicant, you know, Mr. Fitzgerald. Had requested that we allow those, basically the commission. To approve these to be above ground and everything else to be below ground or in some of the location. I did have a question for Mr. Fitzgerald about. Uh, condition four, and if he if he had, I mean, we did change this. Quite a bit. If he had any issues with the way it was written.
Well, I've got a, I've got addition to that if you'd like to hear it after after he chimes in.
Uh, certainly. So so, Mr. Short, at the screen that we're looking at right now. Is that the condition as written, or is that the condition that was sent to us originally?
That's the, that's what we actually changed the condition originally sent to you. Uh, to this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Fitzgerald, this is the modified condition number four. What it or what it could potentially be modified to.
No, this is, this is actually in the staff report in the packet. It's just that originally we we had asked for, you know, um. Comments from Mr. Fitzgerald and and he had indicated this is what he would like to see, I think, so he can comment if he wants something else. If he requests something different.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Short. This is the first time I think we had seen the language in writing, and I believe at this time it's acceptable to us.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Well, that's excellent. I think we've resolved that. Uh, I had written some more verbiage, but if that if that gets us where we need to go, let's keep it simple. And, uh, that, I think, uh. Um. I think that's the only question I had of, uh. Of the applicants. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner Best. Do any other commissioners have any questions for the applicant? And or Mr. Cordasco or Mr. Gallego at this time? Commissioner Ruggles, please go ahead.
Um, yes, just one, since we were talking about the, uh, overhead, uh, collector, uh, cabling. Would the applicant have any idea what the height might be?
Mr. Gallego, would you know the answer to that question?
Yes, certainly. Um, so. There, there's a couple of different, uh, different options that we have when it comes to overhead circuits. Um, we prefer to use, um, wooden pole structures because, um, they they tend to blend in better. Um, obviously, they're they're much less expensive than steel poles right now in the current market as well. With with wooden poles, um, we we can only hold a certain amount of 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 cabling on on those. On those structures, though, without going to a design that's more like an H-frame. And and so. When you go to that, then it starts to get much, much bigger and and more invasive. So. With with typical circuits running from these, some of these individual facilities. We're likely to have one or two circuits on 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 each set of poles. With with steel poles, we can take, we can take more circuits on a steel pole. That being said. Most, most of our of our steel structures and wooden structures would not be, would not be taller than about sixty feet. Um, with the wooden poles, some wooden poles would be, you know, closer to the thirty-five to forty-foot. Height. But again, we can only carry so many. So many conductors on on those wood poles without creating a pretty big footprint in regards to the the size of the structure.
Okay, that's, uh. That answers my question about it. And, uh, that being said, I think the impact, uh, as far as the visual impact. And the distances and having taken a good close look at the terrain out there are going to be pretty minimal. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I would agree.
Okay, thank you, um, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised. Do you have more questions, or did you just forget to put it down?
I seem to have an issue with that.
It's okay. It's okay. I'm not, I'm not judging. Um, okay. This is Chair Ontiveris, and I have two questions that I would like to ask. Um, the first one is for Mr. Phoenix. And you heard the discussion about clearing the area. To keep to keep the corridor that we had discussed open. Or leaving it. Do the testing and gain the information or do do the monitoring. And gain the information from there. I I I can see a value, like I can see that an argument could be made. For each, for doing it each way. One, if you open it up, it's the obvious that now you've got the corridor open. Two being, if you don't, then you're going to. Get the information and learn. How the pronghorn migrate, move, et cetera. On, in your opinion. What do you think the best option of those? On, in your opinion, what do you think the best option of those two is?
Given the fact that there are larger other highly used corridors, it would be best in this situation because of the information gained to not do the clearing until after we've done some testing or got some research results back.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. And then I'm going to follow that up with, at such a point in time that you guys do gain the information and knowledge from the research that you're going to do. And if it became apparent that not clearing it is going to be detrimental or harmful to the pronghorn, on what action would be taken?
We would work with Clonera and Babett Ranches to develop based on our move, the movements of the pronghorn and those movements are going to tell us where they want to go. We would then go in and do habitat manipulation to best address what the pronghorn are showing us they want.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. And the only other question that I have is for Mr. Gallego. Mr. Gallego, you talked about natural vegetation management on using sheep. Is that something that you reasonably foresee happening on this project?
Sure, her personal, I think is, is, as long as it is a method that is approved by, by the, both the landowner, the county game and fish, then yes, we would, we would prefer to use livestock to manage, to manage the growth on, on this project. We always, we always prefer to do that. And there's, there's a lot of reasons, especially when you have a site that has as much rock as this, as this project does. Any of you that have mowed your, your grass with a, with a bush hog or something like that, know the potential for, you know, sparking something up using any kind of mechanical blade in a, in an area that, that gets quite dry and is rocky.
Okay, and then my follow-up question to that is, is that at such a point in time, it was decided that, hey, the best thing we could do here for weed management would be to get some sheep in here? Do you, do you have a contact to get sheep in there?
So we, we typically partner with, with local livestock owners to provide those services. In California, for instance, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of sheep in the Central Valley. And so our, our, our fairly, you know, diverse portfolio over there. We, we use, we use different providers in different areas because there's so many different herders in, in the areas. So we, we have a lot to choose from. But there are some that will bring livestock in and take them out. So it, it really depends on the resources we have at our fingertips in order to provide, provide those services. And we prefer to do it though with local, with local herders. And because it, it doesn't make sense to transport, you know, livestock hundreds of miles in order to do this kind of operation.
Yes, of course, and I, I absolutely agree with you on that. And I am, because I do know I have the answer to this issue, to your sheep issue. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass that information. I'm going to get that information to Mr. Cordasco. That is, that concludes all of my questions. Now, Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised again. Do you have, do you have a question or did you forget to put it down again?
No ma'am, I, I, I have an actual question.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Best.
Thank you. Since we're getting into the weeds, I have some comments about weeds. There's a statement in the Clonera documents eliminating that trucks will be washed, eliminating the possibility of non-native species being transported to the site. And whoever wrote that does not know non-native species very well. There are going to be hundreds of people, certainly dozens of pickup trucks, many trucks, you know, from employees coming in, many trucks delivering things. There are going to be non-native species weeds, seeds delivered to the site. The people who work out there will be in town. And here in town, we've got lots of non-natives growing and the seeds will get out there. They always do. Russian thistle has been identified on the property already by just SWCA. And an anecdote here that has an important point. I live right next to some of the flooding areas here in town caused by the museum fire. And we just had some work done in the forest next to me to create a luvial plains to slow the water down. And as I was walking across the site where it's just a few hundred feet from my house, I saw Russian thistle. And I, there's never been any Russian thistle in this area before. But what really surprised me was it was a foot and a half tall before we had any rain. How did the Russian thistle get here? We haven't had rain in two months and grow to that height. And then I realized that every day I've seen half a dozen water trucks go up into the forest for dust suppression. So the contractor through trucks and feet and pickup trucks delivered the seeds and then watered them three times a day. And that's kind of a cute story. I have promised the local county manager that my wife and I will go get those Russian thistles because it's manageable. A not-so-happy story happened last summer when some citizens noticed that there was a Russian thistle outbreak along Elden Lookout Road here in town. And we contacted the Forest Service and we finally convinced them to come out and, and do a, a day's work on it. It turned out it was 25 acres of Russian thistle that had popped up since the fire. There hadn't been good management, nobody was really looking, and suddenly there were 25 acres. We did a little bit of work on it. This year I went out to see it. It is literally, looks like a lawn of when I was there a month ago of four entire Russian thistle. The Forest Service says they can't spray it because native plants are by, nearby. And so I, apparently next year it's going to be 50 acres of Russian thistle. The point here is that the weeds are coming. And the best thing to do is get them at their earliest stage. The tendency seems to be, yeah, we know they're coming and we'll survey in a couple of years. Well, in a couple of years, the 50 plants at the end of my streak that my wife and I are going to kill would be, could be 5,000 plants if the rain is right. They put out a lot of seeds. And so I would urge you to assume that you are going to have weeds to learn how to identify them, to get out. First of all, since you've got Russian thistle out there, the best thing to do right now is you're going to kill it. Spend the money and realize it's a good investment because those Russian thistles will go to seed. And as I've seen on, I've managed a fair number of properties. It's the disturbed areas that the non-natives love. If you put a pipeline through, I've got some property I'm working on right now. Every pipeline through this property, every disturbance, every bike path is full of Russian thistle. The native, the native areas are holding it off. So my advice is, there's going to be monitoring here every year. But my advice is to get out early, make weed identification part of your environmental training for all of your folks. And hopefully when they see a weed, they won't say, oh gosh, that's somebody else's job. They'll bend over and pull it out. And if you can get that kind of an ethic going across this property, you're going to save yourself a lot of hassle in the long run. And so that's what I have to say about weeds and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Best, for your observation and for your words of guidance there. On, I'm going to ask if the commissioners have any other questions for the applicant and/or Mr. Cordasco and/or Mr. Gallego at this time? Okay, seeing none, I have one final question and this is actually goes to our legal counsel. And Mr. Lumpkin, on page 18 of the staff report, and this is under the item number 17, the decommissioning plan. I don't see any language in this decommissioning plan that addresses bankruptcy. And I know that you remember the conversation that we had when we were working on the Rio that, that there would be nothing where anyone, any entity could escape that. Do you feel like there needs to be any further specific language put in here to specifically address bankruptcy?
Chair Ontiveros, you allow me one second to look through here, especially the segments being highlighted now.
No, and take your time because I know that we as commissioners want to get this really right. So take your time.
And Mr. Short, is this condition, is this taken from the Rio draft language?
Yes, Mr. Lumpkin, it's pretty much exactly what's in the Rio language.
If, if that's the case, and I, I feel comfortable with that, knowing that, yeah, the time and effort that went into putting that into the Rio to cover that situation. If it's nearly identical, then I could only suggest making it exactly identical to ensure that there's no questions there.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to major in minors here and perhaps Ms. Shaw, you could chime in here. But I believe that there was actual language that spoke to the county attorney's office on adding language that specifically spoke to bankruptcy. Like the word bankruptcy was actually mentioned. And that's what caught my attention on this because I'm not seeing that in here.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Best. I remember that specifically as well.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, now we can.
Thank you. Yes, I was just pulling up the actual ordinance, if you could give me a moment. Because yes, there was language put in there specific to this issue. Bob, could you scroll up on your condition? Right there, stop. Oh, go, go up a little bit, go down a bit more. So under that first paragraph E. Okay. I'm looking at that and I think that the updated ordinance has a little bit different language because the last sentence under the paragraph for financial securities reads, "At all time, over any project's operable life, financial securities provided under this section shall be structured to survive the bankruptcy, dissolution, solvency, or other termination of the project owner-operator as a legal entity." And I'm not, unless I'm missing it, I don't see it in that condition.
And, and it's not there. That, that's how come I'm asking the question. It's not there.
Yeah.
And so I guess the question then would possibly go back to Mr. Lumpkin. How, how do you suggest that we get that language in here rather than what we have is the proposed condition in our staff report?
Quite frankly, as simple as what Mr. Short's doing right now, just adding that sentence into it just to ensure that it's made express that it's the responsibility of the applicant or whatever entity succeeds them in interest to ensure that financial securities survive bankruptcy and like dissolution or solvency. And I believe just a simple cut and paste is going to cover us on that.
Okay, and so you are seeing what we're seeing. And so if paragraph E is modified to how we're looking at it now, that's, that's what you're comfortable with, that we got, that's, that covers it.
That satisfies my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that.
That be insolventcy instead of solvency? Dissolution, insolventcy.
Yeah, right there. There we go.
Unfortunately, that's the language in the Rio, so we might want to note that.
I think that might come down to a scripter's error.
I think, I think so. Thanks for catching that, by the way, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I thought I'd taken this verbatim, but apparently I had not.
Okay, okay. With that, I have no further questions. I'm not seeing that anyone else does either. So I'm going to open it up to the public at this time. I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand or unmute. I will call on you. I will ask that you state your name and address for the record and then limit your comments to three minutes, please. Okay, I am not seeing any, any public that wishes to address the commission. I'm giving it just a little bit of time here. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to close it to public comment and I'm going to open it up at commission level. And we're going to go in the same order that we had earlier this evening. And so Commissioner Best, would you please start the discussion amongst the commission?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say first of all, just reiterate, how lucky we are to be here working with what I believe is a very effective ordinance that's taken a lot of time to put together. And a, an applicant I think we can trust to kind of fill in the spaces where we've missed things and we're going to learn a lot from this project. We will have other projects, you know, where folks don't care so much. Where it's just mostly bean counters making decisions. And hopefully we'll learn from this project, other things that we need to stipulate so that we can have success in future projects without someone with such a long conservation. You know, I think back, I think back 150 years to a bunch of people meeting, just like we're meeting, probably not a, probably not a Zoom meeting back then, it's probably sitting around a campfire. You know, a lumberman, a cattlemen, somebody. Uh, you know, a lumberman, a cattlemen, somebody from the railroad. Just looking at around at fantastic resources. And being excited, just as we're excited tonight with this resource. We made some assumptions. That were not right. They assumed they could graze all the grass down to another and. It would come back in the spring, just like it did in East Texas and Missouri, or wherever they came from, and they moved millions of cattle in and. Grace it down and found that this is a different country and they did damage. And the lumbermen cut all the big trees and. Stopped the fires that used to come through and just assumed that the, that the woods would. That the forest would come back to what they had been, and they haven't. And so. We're left with those. That legacy, we build a great town, a lot of great things happen, but assumptions were made that were incorrect. And that caused damage. And I would like to just. Encourage us to make sure that we don't make assumptions. We have a great deal of science and history with us, having game and fish on board is fantastic, all the research and history they have. We don't have as much coordinated firepower with vegetation, and that's what worries me. You can't assume that what worked in nineteen eighty. Or nineteen ninety-five, or even, even two thousand ten with vegetation is gonna work now because we're in a twelve hundred year drought. And so I think that our monitoring is really key. I've expressed my concerns about non-native plants. Uh, I personally sowed a lot of seed recently. In recent years, in the last ten years or so, maybe half a dozen projects. Without water, and I've had very, very poor results. I am humble in the sense that. I know that there are people here who know a whole lot more than I do about this landscape and have generations of work on it. The truth is, it's a different world, it's changing because of the drought, the drought's probably not going away because it's at least. A considerable part of it is climate change caused by us. And so I think we really have to monitor carefully. Uh, for me, especially with the non-native weeds, because what I see is. I disturb areas, I throw down grass seed, and I get non-native weeds coming up. They're just so much better at it. So that, I guess, is my message, just don't assume. Monitor and disturb as little as possible. And. We'll learn the lessons that we have to learn and hopefully not the hard way. And again, I, I would keep right on top of those native, non-native weeds, just. I'd have a crew of teenagers out there all the time looking for non-natives. Um, I do have two things I'd like to, minor things I would like to change in the conditions. Condition one. Uh, middle of the condition, it says, uh, starting in the middle, if new locations do not result. In increased wildlife. Landforms. Vegetation. Cultural or visual impacts. I'll read that again, increased wildlife. Landforms. Vegetation. Or cultural. Uh, cultural or visual impacts. And then number. Eighteen. And this goes to what I said about monitoring. Eliminate the last sentence, so number. Eighteen. Sorry about that. It says the director may increase the time between these reports not to exceed five years. I propose that we say when the project has been completed for three years. The director may increase the time between these reports not to, not to exceed five years. Uh, so that means yearly monitoring. Until three years after the project has been completed. And then at the director's discretion, you can go to five years. I'll read that again, when the project has been completed for three years. The director may increase the time between these reports not to exceed five years. I really think monitoring is the key. And I know that the applicant. And the landowner are in good faith with the monitoring, but again, we're, we're trying to craft something here. For another project down the road when we, when we don't have an applicant. And a landowner with as much commitment. So with that, I can make the findings and I'm really pleased with how this worked, all worked out. Thank you very much to everybody involved, all the Rio people and. And the Babbitts for their conservation work and the applicant. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Best. Can we go back to condition number one, please? Um, okay, let me read that, hold on one second. Okay. See where it says, okay, so we have the modification or visual impacts is determined by the community development director and or the wildlife planner. With consultation from wildlife and other experts. Do we want to say in there specifically, do we want to call something out like Arizona game and fish, or just leave it general? I. Do you have a thought on that? Since you were modifying it, I had given this one some thought as well, and I was just wondering what your thoughts were to. To maybe narrow it just a little bit more.
You know, I think that's a great idea, and I think that. Do we have the qualified experts in here? Remember when we went through that process?
Yeah, I do.
Where is the monitoring one? Because. I, I would like to say qualified experts, including game and fish.
Um.
Okay.
Commissioner Best.
Go, I have this short.
I didn't, what, what was it? Did you change something before this? I didn't.
Well, no, no, I was, I was adding on to what Commissioner Best, like. If you leave that modification as it is. And. Like where it says, community development director and the wildlife planner with consultation. Was it with qualified from wildlife and other qualified experts? To include Arizona game and fish? Not, not including.
There are two issues here. We have a monitoring. Condition, can anybody tell me what number it is?
It's the last, the last one, believe eighteen.
Eighteen or, okay.
Yes, it's number eighteen, Commissioner Best.
Uh, shoot. Okay, got it. Well, you know, we, we have this phrase qualified experts in the renewable energy ordinance, and I don't see that here.
Are we speaking of eighteen now?
I think, yeah, thi- this is the, this is the monitoring.
Okay, is this one good as is?
Well, let's, let's, let's read this together. Since I've already changed it once. Uh, beginning on the fifteenth of January, following, following the first year of operation, annual status reports documenting post-construction and operational impacts. Will be provided to the county. I'm going to propose will be provided to the county by qualified experts. Including Arizona game and fish. Providing a summary of. Including but not limited to wildlife. Plant species, noxious weed control, and so on. Annual status reports documenting post-construction and operational impacts. Will be provided to the county by qualified experts, including Arizona game and fish. Providing a summary of dot, dot, dot. Does that make sense?
Okay, I got the first part is that, let me see what I added here.
Yeah. Because we, we, we went back and forth with qualified experts. When we were writing the renewable energy ordinance. Unfortunately, we didn't get Arizona game and fish in there, which we should, we should have, and, and. That's a, a long story, but we missed. But they're the obvious qualified experts in their field, so. Again, you know, looking at a different situation where we don't have such a willing. Set of applicants and landowners. Uh, we, we don't want. We could be in an awkward position if the qualified experts were. Uh. Paid for by the applicant. And we're not neutral. We know Arizona game and fish is going to be neutral and professional.
Okay, thank you, um, thank you, Commissioner Best. On moving on with commission discussion, Commissioner Clifford.
All of my questions have been answered that I had, I think this is going to be a good project. There's always something that we will miss and the, the applicant. Has done this before and they will do it right. And is going to be a good project for us to learn on for the future. And. With, with everything that's happening with carbon neutral and, and all of that. I think this is a better, the better way to go versus the, for, for. Viewshed for aesthetics versus the, the wind turbines. And I think it's a, it's a better use of this land that they're proposing to do it on. So that being said, I can make the findings and I appreciate Commissioner Best and. Going through everything and he was, he's knows the. Um, renewable energy. A lot better than I do, and to pick up on all of this, I, I really appreciate his knowledge on that. And I want to thank him for doing that, and I can make the findings to approve this.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford, and I concur with your comments regarding Commissioner Best. On Commissioner Burton.
Um, I think every concern that I had, I think has been eliminated, especially after my site visit. Um, I definitely. Don't want to see any additional clearing happening, happening right now. Because I'd really like to see the, the tracking data that they come back with. I think that's really important. Um, for, for research purposes and to know, you know. How patterns change and, and what their responses are going to be, so. I, I can make the findings and I'm actually looking forward to hearing about that. Migration and tracking data in a few years.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Burton, and with us leaving things as they are. And assurances from the developer and the property owner. Um, I, I think that we have put this in the very best hands possible, and we're going to be getting that data. Uh, Vice Chair Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, a very important and, and, and very tedious. Um, undertaking the, the stakeholders in this. Are all concerned and, and, and looking at all the different ways that we can. Improve future contracts as well, but the thing that, that nobody should overlook is the landowner in this. Is an exceptional landowner, and they've. Gone through this project in great detail, and they manage their lands better than any other rancher that I know in Arizona. So I, I feel really comfortable with this, and I can certainly make the findings. I thank everybody for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walters. Commissioner Ruggles.
Well, I can certainly agree with the changes that Commissioner Best has asked for. I can make the findings as well. Any questions I had have been very thoroughly answered. In several ways, site visit was extremely valuable. The amount of time talking to Bill Cordasco about it, just confirm my opinion. That agrees with the, what I would call a remarkably good scientific approach to. What would be section twenty-three by Arizona game and fish. I think that is the right way to do it. Other than that. I think it is a terrific project, it is overdue, I think Arizona in terms of solar. Uh, we've been behind the curve for a long time. Um, this is going to do a lot. To improve that situation, and I think the ordinance that has been created to deal with sighting. Facilities like this. Um, should go a long ways towards creating a model for. Uh, installations like this in the American West. And that being said, I support this completely. I can make the findings, and I am in favor of everything that Commissioner Best has requested. In terms of modification to the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. This is Chair Ontiveras. On. I'm going to tell, I'm, I'm just going to speak honestly here, when I first saw this project coming. Twelve thousand acres, the amount of acreage on. That it was going to cover, I'm not gonna lie, it was a little, it was a little scary to me. And since I first. Since it first came to my attention and I. Read volumes, the volumes of written materials that had been provided by the applicant. On going on the site visit, the great staff analysis that staff has done. And just kind of taking another look at it, I've had a paradigm shift. And I actually went from. I, I'm just gonna say fear of what was going to happen to perhaps a. A bit of excitement as now this is going to happen, because this has now been so thoroughly, I feel like we have gone through this, not, not us, just us as a commission. But the developer, the property owner, staff, et cetera. Have gone through this with a very fine tooth comb. I think all of us realize that, yeah, there may have been a few things that we have left. That we might may find out. But I have the sense of security that. The landowner, specifically Mr. Cordasco, is not going to let anything detrimental happen to the land, the wildlife, et cetera. So. I do, I do like the modifications to conditions number one. Conditions, the number, it would be number seventeen regarding the bankruptcy language. And condition number eighteen, I am in support of that. I also can make the findings and in Northern Arizona. I also can make the findings, and in northern Arizona, we are blessed to have. Some landowners, some ranchers here that know how to care for this land. Really, they, they are the experts in the field. So with that, I can make the findings, and I will be voting to approve this project. With the modifications to the conditions as stated tonight. With that, I will accept a motion in a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of CUP dash two-two dash zero-one-one to zero-one-nine. And zero-two-one to zero-three-four as modified.
Second that. Like to second that.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Best got in on the second first, so I have a motion. By Vice Chair Walters to approve CUP twenty-two zero-one-one to zero-one-nine and zero-two-one to zero-three-four. With a second by Commissioner Best. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And this is Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. And the final item on the agenda tonight is called to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address this commission tonight on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, my clock shows eight forty-nine PM, and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good job catching that, good job catching that bankruptcy thing, Tammy. That was very.
Thank you. We all make a good team.
I know.
Your comments, Mr. Fitz.
Yeah, everybody's got their way of looking at it. It's really great.
Yeah. All right. See you guys on July twelfth.
All right.
Good night, everyone.